You want my glasses?
This is the community food now, the legislative session. Introduction code rule two dash two oh nine solar. And what are we doing with that? Is there anything else to read after that?
It's basically all in here.
You do it different than I do. I just, I don't, like I said, I don't have my glasses. I could probably make do though.
You don't have to do it. You don't have to do it. Either I'll do it or Ronnie can do it.
I got two sets of glasses. I haven't been able to find either one. Alright, hold on. I gotta close this here. What? Six o'clock here.
Six oh one.
For those suffering.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Kent County Commissioners to order will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Have a moment of silence for whatever you would like to be silent for today. Thank you. We have a couple of public notices, applications were made by Double Tap Tavern for a Class D liquor license. And also. A hearing will be held on March the 5th with the county in special exemption use that has been put in by the county commissioners. That'll be at six o'clock here in the Commissioners Hearing Room. In Correspondence Review, we have. Announcement of the, the grand jury was summoned and convened on Monday, March the fourteenth. There's also a. From Gillespie here in the county. And this is, this will be published once a week for two weeks in the, in the local, local paper. And there's also been a. Permit applied for it by Kent Sand and Gravel to increase their existing water appropriation and use permit. Applied to for the Maryland Department of the Environment. We now have several action items. The, we have the regular session minutes from February the 5th, liquor minutes from February the 5th. And a report of the closed session on February the 5th where no action was taken.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. We now have some raffle permits. These include the Community Food Pantry, which is combined gaming devices on March the 2nd, 2019. The Kent County High School Prom Committee, which is a raffle only, March the 8th, 2019. The Women's League at Washington College, raffle only, April the 9th, 2019. And the Old Kent Quilters Guild, a raffle only on November the 19th, 2019. I have a motion to approve these.
Motion to approve all four. Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Now, we also have. Special Class C licensees, the Community Food Pantry, a beer and wine license on March the 2nd, 2019. And the Timothy Kern Memorial Fund, beer only on April the 6th, 2019. Does anybody have any comments on these or? If not.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Make a motion to go into legislative session?
Any other discussion? If not, say aye. We. Here we, we need to introduce Code Home Rule two dash two nineteen, the Solar Energy Systems Utility Scales Special Exemptions. This is the first read. You want to read that, Ronnie?
I can. The first read is an act to amend Article Roman numeral five, sections four point three and six point three. Solar Energy Systems Utility Scales Special Exemption Use in Rural Residential and Community Residential Zoning Districts Respectfully. And Article Roman numeral seven, section seven, special exception, special exception. Bracket Uses and Performance Standards Brackets of the Kent County Land Use Ordinance. By amending these provisions to allow utility scale solar energy systems as a special exception use in the rural residential, community residential districts and to establish additional standards. A public hearing will be scheduled for March nineteenth, twenty nineteen.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to go out of legislative session into open session.
Do you have one more on that one or is it the same thing?
That's, well, we have to have a motion to vote to approve this, don't we?
No, that's just the reading. That's the first reading.
That's what, that's what we just did. So Ronnie made a motion.
Go back into open session.
Go back into open session.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, those in favor say aye. Okay, we now have some appointments here. Beth Everett.
Excuse me, Mr. Wilson, can you sit down so that we can catch, otherwise we won't hear it on the microphone. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Glenn Wilson. I'm President United Way of Kent County. I'm here with a number of folks. I have Beth Everett, who's our Executive Director. I have Jean Austin and Mary Fisher on our board. And I have kind of a guest, Quentin Askew, who is President and CEO of Maryland Two One One. One of the initiatives that our Community Needs Assessment identified was to have a, a source of a comprehensive database to be able to help the citizens of Kent County. From everything from, you know, my teenage daughter is driving me nuts to, there's a, there's a suicide contemplating. And there is a, a network in Maryland of which reports under Quentin that if you dial two one one on your phone, you will get to a call center. In this case, it's one in Salisbury. And those folks will be able to direct you to a resource that. In Kent County to assist you. It could be a heating bill you can't pay. It's a whole variety of, of resources. We have worked at the United Way to make sure that the Kent County Agencies were in the database. We found when we took on this endeavor that it really didn't have many of our agencies and, and support structures. So we've worked Jean Austin on our board particularly, working with Beth, have worked with the Salisbury Call Center to make sure it's a complete database. And now we're at the launch stage, which includes, I think you have a proclamation for Kent County being a two one one month. And Quentin was down to meet with us today. We're gonna have a marketing effort so we can get the word out in a whole variety of ways. So we appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you.
Thank you.
We have a proclamation here that. Can Quentin just say hello since he drove all the way over here?
Yes, yes. Good evening, everyone. Really good to say hello. I got a chance to go to the outlet, so that was really great. So I just really wanted to send thanks and appreciation for allowing me to come here today. And just really say that we, Two One One Maryland is really a, is a willing partner for your state. We are, we are here to help. We are, we are excited about the partnership with Beth and Kent County United Way, and we look forward to the, to the great things we're able to do to assist the residents here in Maryland.
Thank you.
And we have prepared a proclamation and it reads like this. Kent County Maryland Proclamation, February Highlights Two One One in Kent County. Whereas Two One One is committed to be the first most essential resource to anyone who needs help, assisting thousands of people to overcome barriers and address challenges every day. And whereas Two One One is the most comprehensive source of local human and social service information in the United States and most of Canada. And whereas Two One One is a one-stop resource hotline providing information on supplemental food and nutrition programs, sheltering and housing options and utilities assistance, emergency information and disaster relief, employment and education opportunities, services for veterans, healthcare, vaccination, and health epidemic information, addiction prevention and rehabilitation programs, re-entry help for ex-offenders, support groups for individuals with mental illnesses or special needs, a safe confidential path out of, out of physical and/or emotional domestic abuse. And whereas Two One One Maryland is partnership of four agencies working together to provide simple access to health and human services, information through an easy to remember telephone number that connects people with important community services with specially trained call specialists answering calls 24 hours a day, every day of the year. And whereas United Way of Kent County fully supports the mission of Two One One, Maryland and Kent County and is committed to making it the most comprehensive resource center available for county residents. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Kent County, Maryland, do hereby proclaim the month of February as Two One One citizens of Kent County to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs that support the work of Two One One Maryland and the United Way of Kent County in their endeavor to serve the community. Signed, the County Commissioners of Kent County, Maryland, P. Thomas Mason, President, Ronald H. Fithian Member, Robert N. Jacob Jr. Member, dated February the nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and on behalf of the citizens of Kent County, it's their privilege to present you with this proclamation.
Next, we have Beth Hill from University of Maryland Extension.
Good evening. I'm Beth Hill. I'm the 4-H educator here in Kent County representing the University of Maryland Extension. And as to new commissioners, I have not had the chance to come before you and talk about the 4-H highlights for the year. Mr. Fithian, you've heard this before. So I'm gonna maybe do a little bit more detail than I have, maybe in past years, just to give you a little bit of familiarity with our program. And first of all, I'd like to start out by saying thank you. Thank you to the Commissioners and, and to county government for helping to support Extension. You have been a crucial partner to our programming and our existence in the county, as long, as well as the state of Maryland and of course, the university. My program is the youth development arm of the university, so we are right here in Kent County doing program through, programs throughout the year. Our office is in your building at the Public Works Complex, so we very much appreciate that. So what I've brought for you, and it's up on the screen, is an annual highlights that I do each year to kind of give you an idea of our county level programming in, in the county each year. So I break it down by a couple of different things, starting with the numbers strictly. We have a hundred and twenty eight 4-H members in our community clubs. This year, we were able to add a new program, a special interest after school program, mostly with Garnett Elementary School students through our third through fifth grades. We had forty-three of those students, which is a great increase in our programming. We meet with them twice a month with a volunteer leader, so that has been a great addition to our 4-H programming in the county. Plus, we have lots of 4-H volunteers. I have eighty listed there, but there are more than that that are unofficial volunteers. So we certainly are a volunteer-driven organization. I'm only one person, so I rely on those volunteers to help me manage and operate our program. Now strictly by the numbers, those volunteers bring a value to us here in Kent County. When you look at the volunteer hours, some of which have to report those hours to the state, our shooting sports instructors have to report their, their teaching hours and all the things that go into that, and so do some of our other volunteers. So when you look at all those hours accumulated, there's a twenty-four dollar and sixty-nine cent value to each of those hours that these qualified volunteers bring to our program. So for last year, that's over seventy-six thousand dollars that was contributed in services to the, to the county. But there's also actual dollars that come into the county from various sources into our program. And that, that figure this year was over twenty-six thousand dollars in grants and donations. A big chunk of that is a nine thousand dollar grant that comes from the state of Maryland through the Department of Agriculture that comes to the KENAG Center that pays out premiums at the fair. So that's a big contribution. That money goes right back into our county as spending money or savings money that the kids and other participants in the fair get. But we also get grants from the Maryland 4-H Foundation. We get donations. And this year, we had quite a bit of money given in memorial donations to some of our past volunteers and participants in the 4-H program, including Carol Gibson, Owen McCoy, Doris Moffett, and Jerry Tribbet. So we thank their families for, for looking at 4-H and saying we value enough to put money toward it. Now, these funds are used in a lot of different ways, mostly in educational resources and programming. But I also solicit money for scholarships to be able to send our Kent County kids to events, most of which are state or national level events, including the state fair and state competitions, state trips, camping, that kind of thing. And I'll get to some of those national and international trips in a moment. We also focus, 4-H has some pillars that we build all of our programming around, and it's all based on life skills. And one of those very important things that we try to instill in kids is a service to others in their community. So I've highlighted four of our big service projects at the county level. That does not include any of the service projects that the clubs themselves do, and they all do service projects also. Our biggest one is our, our toy drive. It's a huge two-month-long service project where we partner with the Lions Clubs and, and the Community Food Basket Program to provide the toys that go to the kids in Kent County this year. It was over five hundred children were supported by that, and we had our highest fundraising in, in a few years as well. We raised over two thousand one hundred and twenty dollars that went to purchase toys, and that didn't count the toys themselves. So it's a big project. I have a 4-Her who, who attended all activities for the toy drive both this year and last year. It's the first time I've had a 4-Her attend every single event. And so they can earn over twenty service learning hours by participating in that project. So it's, it's a significant commitment of time and activity that these kids put into this. And they are the planning committee. They make this happen. I facilitate it, but it's the kids that make this happen. So that's really an exciting project for us. We certainly support the Ag Center. We have multiple cleanup events and maintenance days there every single year. And over a hundred and fifty-six 4-Hers and family members and volunteers participated in events down at the Ag Center, preparing it for multiple events all year. As you guys know, it's a county-owned facility, but there's no person there that is directing the maintenance of it. So we rely on all of our 4-Hers and volunteers and families to do that for us. And so they do a significant amount of work there. We also do a food drive every year, as well as supporting military through a Christmas card project that we do every year. So those are some of the, the service projects that we do. Then we get into our educational programming, and that's kind of broken down into a couple of different areas, including science. And you can see where we have served and the number of youth and everything that are coming into our programs and the amount of teaching I do, environmental and ag and animal science, human science, and of course, science, engineering, technology, and math. We had two really great programs, and especially the Kent Bay's program at the middle school has been an outstanding program for us. I partner with Sabine Harvey on that. We go into this, into the middle school every three weeks, so it's a pretty intensive gardening and food to table kind of program with middle schoolers. And some kids, we've done, this is, we're in our fourth semester, I think, or third, yeah, fourth semester. Some kids have been with us the whole time. That's amazing. They choose to keep coming back to that program. So we've grown food. We've given food away as service, so it's a really wonderful program. And also, I'm doing a concentrated effort on our clovers, which are the five to seven-year-olds. They can be in our 4-H program, but they are, they're young, and so they get special attention. They're more hands-on than even our older 4-Hers. But one of the things I wanted to highlight is what our kids have been doing this past year, and that's, that's where our kids have been going, what programs they've been participating in. And I have that broken down by the county level events, regional events, state and state events to start with. The one thing I want to highlight in the county is that we had eighty-one point six percent of our 4-Hers participating in the fair. That's up eleven percent from twenty seventeen. So our kids, we have a really energetic and young group of 4-Hers that just are gung ho. And so we had a huge percentage of them participating in the fair this year, and that's fantastic because a lot of learning goes on there. They're able to showcase their skills there. There's a lot of social interactions that happen at the fair. So it's a great opportunity for our kids to grow and develop. We have lots of participation at the state level, which I'm very proud of. We don't have a huge Kent program here in Kent County, but our kids are, are very active at state level events. And we have national level events, and this I'm also very proud of each year that we have 4-Hers that are traveling and going outside of our county and even outside of our state to events that again, build their skills and their development. We had four young people that went to National 4-H Congress this year. The state 4-H office targeted Kent County because we had such a high quality of kids interviewing and their portfolios. Normally, you get one slot per county, and they helped fund four of our kids to go to Congress, which was in Atlanta, Georgia. they helped fund four of our kids to go to Congress, which was in Atlanta, Georgia this past fall. And so I was really immensely pleased at that. They were so pleased with the quality of our kids. We had one go to, a young lady go to Camp Minnewanka in Shelby, Michigan. One of the four members of the Maryland State Shotgun Team was from Kent County, and so Matt Hofstadter traveled to Grand Island, Nebraska, to compete in that competition, which is a week-long event. And then, I will say, it is my son, but he has, he was our top dairy judger from Kent County this year, and he went on to make the Maryland Dairy Judging A-Team, which traveled to two national events, the All-American Dairy Show in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, and then to World Dairy Expo in Madison, Wisconsin. And I'm happy to say for Kent County, we have a member there for two years in a row on a Maryland team that placed in the top three. The top three 4H teams at World Dairy Expo get to go on to the Royal Highland in Scotland. So we have our second 4H-er, Ethan Miller, went last year in 2019. This year, my son will be traveling to Scotland and Ireland and England to attend that event with the Dairy Judging Team. And I'm happy to say that the other, one of the other four members is from Queen Anne's County. So we had two from the shore and two from the western shore. So the shore can be very proud of our 4H dairy traditions. It continues. I'm happy about that. And here again, is an international experience that these kids were able to get because of their 4H Dairy Judging participation. And the final thing is there at the bottom is just some pictures of some of our kids and what they've been doing. The three pictures at the bottom are our national-level teams. So you can see the Congress delegation, the Shotgun Team delegation in the middle, and that's the second from the left. And then, the Dairy Judging Team, and my son Dylan is second from the left on that picture as well. So I'm very happy about our year. We've had a great 4H year. It's been very busy and very active. And we celebrate the year 2018 and all of its achievements and our volunteers at our annual Achievement Banquet, which I know we have sent you invitations, so I just want to in-person extend that invitation as well. It's on Sunday, March 3rd, at 12:30 at the Millington Firehouse, and we would certainly love to have you there. If you are able to come, we will have you help hand out awards. I think that's always nice for our kids to see the commissioners and to interact with you. And again, thank you for your support of our 4H program. Without you, we couldn't do it. So we appreciate everything that you've done to support us. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Beth.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And I have extra copies of this in hard copy, so if anybody wants one, please grab me, and I will give you an extra copy.
I might just add something to what Beth said, because some of you know, maybe you don't know. I mean, I was involved in 4H as a 4H-er and then worked in Extension with 4H-ers. And it's amazing, Kent County, for being a small county, over the years, the, how well they have achieved in events on the state level. I mean, it's amazing, particularly in dairy. I mean, we're going back a few years now, but in 1973, I was one of the coaches that went with the Maryland Dairy Judging Team to Europe, which was, I mean, it was an experience you'll never, you'll never forget. At that time, we went for a month. And we went to England, Wales, Scotland, Isle of Guernsey, Jersey, Denmark, Germany. I mean, we had a much, I guess we had more money back in those days. I don't know.
It's about a two-week trip now.
It's a two-week trip now. But my son was also on a team that won it at Madison, and he made the trip to Europe. And we have, there's quite a few people in Kent County that were on those teams and went to Europe. And people would think, oh, well, that's dairy farming. That's judging. But it's much, much bigger than that, because there's a lot of the 4H-ers that participated on those teams, and not only in Kent County, but other places, that are not working, say, even in agriculture. But it teaches you how to speak, because you have to give reasons. It teaches you how to be successful in whatever job that you decide to pursue. So it is a good program, and I personally thank Beth for what she does, and I'm looking forward to it all continuing.
Thank you. And if you have any questions at any time, we'll be back hopefully in October for our proclamation for National 4H Week, and I'll bring some 4H-ers and volunteers with me at that time, and you'll get to meet some. But if not, come to Achievement or the Fair this summer. We would love to have you come and visit with us. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. We now have Josh Thompson. Certainly.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Emmett Duke. I'm the Sasfras River Keeper. I haven't seen any of you since you got elected, so congratulations. I just noticed something. In order to be elected county commissioner in Kent County, I guess you have to have a three-letter name with an "ah" sound in the middle, Bob, Tom, and Ron.
Never thought of that.
Okay, so we're off. And hi, Shelley. And ladies. So the Sasfras River Association and the Chester River Association, Kent County's lucky to have these two organizations. We joined up with two other riverkeeper organizations on the eastern shore this past year, and we're now Shore Rivers, and represent all the waterways from the Sasfras to the Chop Tank. Kent County's really fortunate to have Josh Thompson working with us, because for the last six or seven years, he has become a real specialist in any kind of waterway restoration, creating wetlands, restoring wetlands, restoration of gullies and ravines, and anything to do with making water cleaner as it runs off the land into the rivers. We've done a lot of big projects. We just finished one at the end of, end of last year for $1,200,000 for a 4,400-foot gully restoration on the other side of Galena. All of this is going on in Kent County. I think Kent County, I'm almost sure, Kent County has more restoration projects, big restoration projects, than any other county on the eastern shore, and probably in Maryland. And Josh is the reason for all this. So he's coming to you tonight to ask you to help us out a little bit. Everything we do, just about everything we do qualifies for WIP credits for Kent County, AGC credits mostly, but credits. So with that, I'll just turn it over to Josh and let him tell you why we're here tonight.
Okay. Thanks, Emmett. I'm not as great as he thinks I am, but I appreciate it. So basically, we, as you know, we do restoration work in Kent County and, well, all across the shore. Now that we've merged, we're actually supposed to be covering the canal to Cambridge. That's the, that's the, I guess, and I think we've expanded a little bit further south than that, since we originally came up with that motto. So most of the work that I do is in Kent and Cecil County, at least to date, because originally, we were Sasfras River Association. That's the watershed, that's where the watershed falls. So last year, as Emmett said, we did a large project on Swan Town Creek, or just off of Swan Town Creek, outside of Galena, that $1.2 million project. And I think I came to you guys at that point and asked for a waiver of fees, review fees, and you guys approved that. We had the support of Amy Mordock and the Planning and Zoning Office. So recently, we'd gone back to planning and zoning to review a project that we're getting ready to implement on Brendan Starkey's farm, Old Field Farm, right outside of Galena. Similar, it's not necessarily stream restoration, but a large wetland project that we're doing there, that's designed to treat runoff from the adjacent fields, and also just capture stormwater. Sometimes during irrigation, you get runoff events, and that we're capturing that inside of that system and treating it if it needs to be treated, and then slowly releasing it into the stream below. So we, when I met with Planning and Zoning, we talked again about potentially getting a waiver for the review fees. And at that time, we talked about, you know, I said, well, if we're going to continue to do this, why don't we just ask for a blanket waiver if we're going to be doing work that the county's going to get credit for, as far as WIP credits go? So that made sense to everybody, so here I am. But just real quick, this particular project, we're spending around $300,000. It's going to generate somewhere in the neighborhood of, I'm gonna have to jump in and look at the numbers, but somewhere, let's see, around 2,000 pounds of nitrogen, 105 pounds of phosphorus, and 1,400 pounds, that's probably, 1,400 tons of TSS. So that's annually. And if you look at the average cost per pound to implement these projects across the state, that's including agriculture and stormwater, and, you know, everything all combined. MTE will say around $800 a pound is the average cost. And then if you get into some of the urban projects, you're in thousands of dollars per pound. So if we're generating this particular project, which is a smaller one, 2,000 pounds of nitrogen at $800 a pound, that's quite a bit of money. So I think the review fees on this project were in the hundreds of dollars, and actually paid, because we were trying to get the project moving forward while we had good weather. I went ahead and paid those fees, but we're just kind of coming here as a, you know, preemptive, can we, you know, ask for a blanket waiver of review fees in the future. Just as an aside, we have another project coming up that we would be getting reviewed on the Jones Dairy Farm, and that project's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of, I think, $800,000, $900,000. And it'll be generating over 5,000 pounds of nitrogen credit annually, which again, I think that's in like, what is that, four, five million dollars at $800 a pound? So that's kind of the gist of it.
Correct in that the last time you were requesting a waiver, it was for review and inspection fees, right?
Right, review and inspection.
Would you like, is that the official request, review and inspection?
Yeah, that'd be the best.
Who pays for the projects, or where does that money come from?
I thought you guys were paying for this one. This is, this is money coming from...
Put anything over on you, Commissioner.
We submit, so basically, we pull these projects together, find landlords that want to work with us, and then pull the designs together, and then we submit to various funders. The largest one is DNR, Maryland DNR. They have Chesapeake and Coastal Bay, what is it? Chesapeake, Atlantic, Coastal Bay Trust Fund, which I believe is money generated from rental car tax, rental car tax and something else, I can't remember. But it's, they generate about $50 million a year. Twenty, around $25 million of that is spread out amongst the grant applicants all over the state to do this type of work. So, yeah, we've been lucky enough to get funding pretty much every year since the trust fund started.
Also, we get a lot of money from NIFW, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, to some of these projects.
Chesapeake Bay Trust is another one.
Chesapeake Bay Trust.
The bulk of it comes from Maryland DNR.
It doesn't come from Kent County. It's not a taxpayer nickel in any of our projects. Kent County taxpayers.
Yeah. So the other, and this is, this is kind of, it's not as important, but it is a, when we apply for these grants, it's on a competitive basis. So I think last year, we had $25 million available, and somewhere around $100 million in requests. So one of the many things that they look at is costs, or one of the major things, I guess, they look at is pounds reduced per dollar spent. So it is on a competitive basis per dollar. And the review fees don't really cost that much money, but I think on the Swan Town project, we were looking around, because it's based on the ENS, an estimate of the ENS costs, or erosion sediment control costs. And on that project, because it was in a deeper vein, I think we had $8,000 or $10,000 in sediment control. So it was a fair, you know, decent chunk of money. So that, every little bit helps when you're, you know, on a competitive basis.
I think you're right, though. I think Kent County does get its, very much get its fair share out of those, as far as these projects. We have another one going on at St. Paul's that started down there, same principle.
I tend to reiterate, or to emphasize, we do get WIP credit for this, so this does benefit the county.
What was the other one besides review fees?
Inspection.
Inspection fees.
I guess we need a motion.
So I can make a motion to waive the review fees and inspection fees?
For Shore Rivers.
Shore Rivers. Second.
Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
You for your work. Back and see us again.
All right, we will.
We now have Dr. Karen Couch, these Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, President Mason. Mrs. Heller, Board of Commissioners, thank you for having us this evening. We have, I should introduce my co-partner here, Dr. David Lieber. He's had a very exceptional career with the state of Maryland. He served for 13 years as the Executive Director for the IAC and Public School Construction. And he also served as six years, six years in Prince George's County as our facilities planner. So he has close to 20 years' experience working in school construction in Maryland. So we feel very fortunate that he is working with Kent County and helping us navigate the cumbersome process for requesting support from the state, and also for us moving forward with a lot of our facility planning. Our purpose here this evening really is to address four items, and I'll briefly outline those four areas that we'd like to cover this evening, and then we're going to pretty much tag-team the presentation this evening. The first of which is to call your attention to the Six-Year Facility Strategic Plan that the school system spent a great deal of time putting together. And Dr. Lieber was our consultant that helped us put the process together. We spent an extensive amount of time gathering information from the community. And I'd also like to take this moment to acknowledge Richard Coulter, who's in the audience. He served on the Facilities Strategic Planning Committee as well. I'd also like to take an opportunity to introduce two of our board members who are here this evening, Trish McGee and Brian Williams. So we would like to highlight some of the important areas under the Tier One projects under the Six-Year Facility Strategic Plan, and the projects that informed our FY 2020 CIP application to the state. The second thing that we thought would be important is to go through each of the individual projects, particularly since we have two new county commissioners, and outline all of the Tier One projects that were included in the 2020 CIP application. The third item is to briefly outline the requirements for Dr. Lieber's replacement at public school construction, in that the request and the requirement for us to hire a project manager to help us through these projects as well. And then finally, to make a request to the county commissioners for your support in the project management and the facilities planning with regard to these projects. So the first item that I have included, and there were several attachments that I included in the initial documents that I forwarded last week, was just a brief outline of the status of all of our projects as they stand with the IAC. At the time when I sent the information to the Board of Commissioners, we had already received 75% received 75% of the funding that we requested from the state for support of the four projects that are listed on the memo that I provided to you. Since then, and we found out at the end of last week, the IAC has met again, and we have now received 90% of what we've requested from the state. So in my memo that I submitted with my documents, I noted that typically, as, as noted in COMAR, we receive 75% of the, of the requested funding from the state, generally in the December, January meeting of the IAC. And then they will meet again in May, and typically the 25% that is outstanding is awarded at that time. They met in February and awarded Kent County up to 90%. So we feel, as I noted in the document and the memo, we feel confident that we will receive 100% from the state. They have indicated strong support for what we have submitted to them. I think, as I can attest, when we presented to the IAC, when Dr. Lever was the Executive Director, when we asked for money for Garnett to replace the roof and the HVAC, he, his comment to us was, "Wow, Kent County is here," because we had not been asking for money from the state for a number of years in the past. So I think there's a lot of sentiment with the IAC that they would like to support Kent County, that we haven't been in the chow line, so to speak, asking for money. And I think there's a sentiment, at least it was reinforced when we presented to the IAC and the public school construction about these projects, that they would very much like to see and see our projects move forward and support Kent County. You'll note that I also included that our projects received an A status, and that is a strong indication that the projects are supported by the state, and I wanted to include that as well, noting that we received a letter from the state noting that they would hold off on providing planning approval for Galena until their May meeting. Essentially, we were told that planning approval doesn't necessarily come until the very end of their cycle and awards that they make to the school system. So it really didn't inhibit our ability to move forward. We had plenty to do to keep on track with, moving forward with all of our projects. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. Lever and let him go through the projects. I did provide you with another document outlining some more details about Galena, because I think that is a more complicated project, and we do have a little bit of time in terms of where we're gearing up for the planning approval, and I wanted you to understand some of the challenges and deficiencies we have at the building that we're trying to address as we move forward and that will drive our request next year for the FY 2021 CIP application. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Lever.
Thank you, Dr. Couch. Is this on?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, good evening, Ms. Heller, good to see you again. I'd like to go through the projects. You have a handout in front of you, and the notes at the top are meant to helpfully explain some of the nuances and the obscurities that have to do with the public school construction process. It's been in place since 1971. It's a very effective program, but it is a complex program as well. So first of all, the funding allocations are indicated by the IAC. The IAC stands for the Interagency Commission on School Construction. Legislation last year changed it from a committee that reported to the Board of Public Works to an independent commission, which is in the Maryland State Department of Education. So the IAC now has final approval on project allocations as opposed to making recommendations to the Board of Public Works, which previously had the final approval. However, formally, no funds can be considered to be approved until the governor enacts the capital budget bill and the Board of Public Works approves the allocations. Those are formalities. So that has to be kept in mind. The IAC has issued a memo about that. No one should be alarmed about it. It's basically just stating what the facts are. But precedent indicates, and this goes back to the very beginning of the program, that when the IAC makes a decision, it, those decisions will be honored and these projects will be funded. So we can move forward, I think, with great level of assurance that the projects will indeed be funded. It's also, as Dr. Couch said, very typical that the IAC does make its recommendations for funding in stages. And by law, it's required to recommend no more than 75% of the total submitted governor's budget before, by January 1st, which it has done, that's a statewide figure, then up to 90% of the submitted capital budget by, before March 1st, and then the final amount is after May 1st. This legislation that goes back at least 10 years. The final amount, right now, the figure that everybody's working with is $280 million statewide. However, in Maryland, the General Assembly has the authority to add funds to the capital budget. So the final amount, hopefully, will be more than $280 million, which is good news for Kent County, because that means there will be that much more that's available to finish these projects. As Dr. Couch also said, I think the state is recognizing that things have changed in Kent County, that the needs are being acknowledged through these projects. A good process was in place to develop these projects through the strategic plan, and so I think there's a lot of support for them. The final note here is just that about, as Dr. Couch said, the delay in the planning approval for Galena. We're disappointed by that. It does mean that the notice to proceed to the architect will be delayed until probably July, which squeezes the time that's available to complete the schematic design by the deadline of September 2nd. But I still think it can be done. We can still stay on track. So to get down to the projects, we have a roof replacement project at Rock Hall Elementary School. We had just learned today that the design has been approved by the Department of General Services. This is somewhat delayed from what we were hoping about. We cannot bid until we have that approval. We were hoping that we'd have this on the street as of last Friday. Now we're looking at the 28th to have it on the street. We still believe that we'll be within the window to get good winter prices from the roofing contractors and then be able to move forward with construction of school, as soon as school lets out in June. That project will be coordinated with priority number four, which I'll come back to when I get to, I've got to handle this now. We have the design underway for security vestibules at all five schools. They're being done under design-build-project-delivery method. The team has worked in Calvert County very successfully doing security improvements. They have a proven track record. The construction wing of it is actually working on a project in Washington, at Washington College right now. So they are vested in this community, and they've been very, very diligent about producing the work. We will have hard costs by the end of February. Right now, we're still working with a budget cost that was provided to us on December 12th by the construction company. If anything, we're hoping that the costs will come in less than the budget cost, because they will be involved in competitive solicitation from the subcontractors, the trade contractors. That work is also scheduled to begin as soon as school lets out, so June 17th, I believe is a Monday of the week after school lets out. Hopefully, we'll see things starting to happen then and move very, very quickly through the projects. These are fairly simple projects to put in place. The contractors are very happy to be working in the summer, because then they don't have to run interferers with bosses and parents and staff and all that. They have a clean field to work in, and they'll be moving forward. Third project is the renovations at Galena Elementary School. This project was prompted by a recognition that the roof and the mechanical system were in such terrible condition that they absolutely had to be replaced in the short term. But getting into the project and seeing what the cost would be to do the roof and the HVAC, we looked at other deficiencies within the school and prioritized them and realized it would be best and most cost-effective to do a number of improvements at the same time. And the pages that Dr. Couch has pulled from the strategic plan outline, on page 23 of your handout, the first page, the deficiencies that we see, runs from the circulation system, the security issue, which will be addressed through the security vestibule. Cafeteria space is small and not adequate for the number of students. That compounds with the circulation problems to create a real nexus of difficulty at lunchtime with staggered lunch periods and almost a kind of a traffic cop situation of trying to keep the kids moving and not having them run into one another. The restrooms do not meet the ADA requirements for accessibility. A number of spaces that are, were being used for various functions before the consolidation occurred, now the school is full and all spaces are being used. The number of interior spaces, including the media center and a number of classrooms, do not have daylighting. Then the building systems, as I mentioned, the roof and the mechanical system are deficient. And the list goes on, with kitchen ventilation, automatic temperature controls, plumbing, fire protection system. The electrical distribution system is adequate, but the switchboard is frozen. And so there isn't actually no way right now to turn off the electricity in the school. This is not a good situation at all. This needs to be addressed as quickly as possible, but it has to be coordinated with the other improvements. There needs to be an emergency generator, and the lighting should be improved and fire alarm. Now, not all of these can be done under the budget conditions we have. We had to prioritize.
And I would just note, I just want to interrupt for a second and let you know that we did hire an architectural firm to complete the feasibility study. So a number of these were not just items that we identified, you know, from shooting from the hip. We actually contracted with the architectural firm to go in and provide some, some, some guidance and help us identify the areas at the school that needed to be addressed.
That's right. The feasibility study actually gave us six options on the mechanical system, which you'll see outlined in the chart on page 25. And the board has endorsed option, replacement with enhancements, option two, which is the last one on the chart. This is the second least expensive option from a capital investment perspective. It's the most expensive option from the 30-year running time perspective, the lifecycle analysis perspective. So it is not the most energy efficient, but it will make a great difference in terms of the school. An improvement to the existing comfort levels and energy efficiency within the school will be far more efficient than the system which is in it now. However, the gymnasium will also be air-conditioned. So with that, additional loads will be added to the mechanical system, so you can actually expect that the monthly bills will go up, even though it's running at a much more efficient rate than the current system. So this is a very thorough process that has been gone through to determine the appropriate mechanical system, one that I think works within fiscal constraints, but will improve the efficiency of the school.
What I, what I would like to add at this point as well is, in preparation for identifying our priorities for the FY 2021 CIP application, which would include the Galena project, we're waiting for approval to begin the planning process. And as part of the planning process, we have to go through the educational specifications, which means we've identified a group of stakeholders, parents, teachers, custodians, those that are going to be maintaining the building, to identify, to look at the possibilities. Obviously, we have, if you gave everybody, you know, the candy store and said, "You can have everything you want," of course, everyone would want everything. So we know that we have some budgetary constraints. However, we do have some priorities and some budgetary concerns, or, or at least some, some ideas in terms of where we should go moving forward. And, and that's where I thought it would be important, because I know we reviewed this with the, the prior commissioners, but we have two new ones, so we felt it was important for you to understand that there truly is the priority, as identified by the staff, and we heard this when we met with them a couple of weeks ago, for our first meeting for educational specifications, is in fact the cafeteria. The cafeteria is very undersized, and it is creating a bottleneck situation for the staff in terms of how they have to run their, their lunch periods, like every 15 minutes, just so they can clear students out and bring more students in. And initially, when we looked at this and we brought in our architects, the first idea, if you go to page 27, you'll see that the best design would be to literally just increase the size of the cafeteria. But that would mean, and we've got plenty of land at Galena where you could actually, you know, build out and make that cafeteria larger. But that would add some more construction cost to the project and probably more than we had initially set forth for this, this project itself. So we came up with what we thought would be, would address the problem, but obviously is a Band-Aid. And what we looked at doing was taking over a classroom, and so you're actually reducing one of the classrooms and making an auxiliary cafeteria, so that you do expand the cafeteria size, but you're actually capturing one of the classrooms. And what we heard from the staff was, "Well, you're creating now two areas that have to be supervised instead of, you know, making the cafeteria larger so that it addresses the problem long-term." So we wanted to bring that to your attention, that, that is certainly a possibility. We didn't add in the actual cost for that. That would take some time to figure that out. I wanted you to know that we, we scaled it back to do the second idea in terms of capturing the classroom, just because we were trying to be mindful of what available funds were there for the construction project itself.
If I could add to that, removing that classroom, you can see at the top, middle of the drawing, it says base and then classroom repurposed for cafeteria. That was the classroom that would become the adjunct cafeteria space. If that were retained as a classroom, it would help the school to have more flexibility in the future. If enrollments grow or as educational requirements change, it might mean that you don't have to build an addition. The other dashed box that you see on the upper left-hand side indicates where there could be an additional two classrooms built on. That would come off of what was originally the old shop area in the school. So that is a future possibility if enrollments increase, but if you can retain that classroom by expanding the cafeteria instead, you may not need that addition in the future.
Right. And, and I would also add that the existing shop right now is being used as district storage. So if at some point, and I would say that because of consolidation, we did have some additional space in all of our schools for storing additional desks and chairs and instructional materials. But when we consolidated, those spaces were basically removed. So we are storing some things in Wharton, but if at some point in time we were to build out the shop area and convert them into classrooms, there would be no more district storage space. So we would have to keep that in mind, that, that we still, the district still needs space to store our equipment, to store our instructional materials, and to store other items that are used maybe seasonally within our schools. So, you know, we cleared out that space at Rock Hall, and we'll talk about what we're planning to do in Rock Hall and adding some additional instructional spaces, but every time we capture those spaces and utilize them in ways to support- But every time we capture those spaces and utilize them in ways to support instruction, then it takes away some of the, I mean, it's kind of a give and take.
Just to run through the scope quickly, we have the base scope, the roof and the HVAC system. They are critical. When we redo the roof, we also can install light tubes or other devices that can bring light down into the media center and into the classrooms. You'll notice that clear story windows would be called for so that you could economize on the number of penetrations you make in the roof, you get borrowed light into the classrooms. And in fact, those were, many of those classrooms were exterior classrooms at one time, are already structurally framed. So really, it's just a question of removing masonry to a certain level and then installing the glass area to get the borrowed light. Under base scope, the security vestibules listed. Originally, we thought that would be part of the renovation, but that has been moved into the security vestibule project so it can be done much more quickly than the renovation will be completed. So that really should be struck from the list. And then the cafeteria kitchen improvements, and you can see diagrammed, expanded vestibule to the left of the cafeteria. The serving line moved out of the kitchen itself. That will improve the operation of the kitchen. It will also allow two serving lines to be put in place. Right now, there's only one serving line, which we understand creates a real bottleneck in terms of serving the kids. And then the auxiliary cafeteria to the left, and these would be what we, sort of scaled back version, highly compromised, but still it'll work. You have to remember, though, that that exit where the vestibule is, is also serving for kids who are going out to recess and I think PE, so that you get cross currents of circulation there. It'd be much better if we could separate those two currents of circulation, it would smooth things out in terms of the operation of the school. The ad alternates would be an ADA compliant ramp. Right now, the school is technically ADA compliant, except for one space in the far lower left-hand corner of your plan. In other words, a disabled person can get to all of the spaces in the school by means of ramps. However, in real terms, it's a very awkward and difficult situation. A disabled person who was in the classroom just above the lower left-hand corner would have to go through the media center and upper ramp and then along the corridor, which is parallel to Main Street, you would arrive at the classrooms at the lower left-hand corner, or they'd have to make the full circuit around near the cafeteria. So it does put disabled persons at a true disadvantage in terms of any class changes that are required. And so the idea here is that you put in an ADA accessible ramp. You fill in these rather strange double steps that are coming down, break up the hallway now, that's the hallway which is parallel to Main Street, fill that in. You capture a storage area or a resource room and improve the circulation significantly through this. And then another set of ad alternates would be to make the toilets ADA accessible for boys and girls. Whether you would do all three, whether you do two, whether you do one, would be a budget issue. Ideally, you'd do all three of the toilets, but that would be something that would have to be worked out during the whole design and construction process, the bidding process. Then we also listed future options. But under the view that once you make these improvements, you're not likely to be coming back to the school for at least several decades because you have other work to do in the county. Try to do as much critical scope as possible now within the budget so we can really leave the school in good shape and not have to come back to it in any short-term time. And Dr. Couch, is there anything that I overlooked there?
No, I think this might be the time to entertain some questions before we move on. Yeah, we'll talk about, but I just wondered, since we're on this, if you have any questions or about this particular project before we move on, it might be easier to address the time.
The Galena area is probably the most, it's probably the best area that's going to grow. And so how many students could you put in the school? I mean, where is it currently now and what do you think is the maximum amount of students?
I don't have those numbers in front of me. I know you guys were talking about it at your last meeting, so I don't, it's pretty full to capacity at this point. Every space, if you walk the halls of Galena, they don't have a single classroom that's not being utilized for some service or some, you know, some item. They might have one that is being shared at this point by a couple of the teachers that are coming in and out, like the English language ESL teacher, and some of the artinerant ancillary staff that come in and out of the building. But right now, it's pretty tight.
You can't add students to your current classrooms?
We can add, we can certainly add more students to existing classrooms. Right now, we might, the average class size is about twenty. In some classes, it's smaller, in some classes, it's a bit larger. So I would say the average is about twenty per classroom. Can we add more to the existing classrooms? Yes. We made a commitment to our families that once we consolidated, we would keep the class sizes as small as possible, twenty-two to one for the primary classes and twenty-four to one for the intermediate. So yes, we can still add more students, but as far as adding additional classrooms, if we had to add another grade level teacher, we're going to be tight.
Can I add something here? In the 2017-2018 school year, Galena was operating at about eighty-four percent utilization. Utilization is a very technical term. It basically looks at full-time enrollment, full-time equivalent enrollment divided by the state-weighted capacity. So it's a paper number. That would indicate actually a very good utilization. It does indicate that on paper, there's room to grow. In actual practice, when you go into a school, you find that the classrooms really are being used. And as schools are being required to do more and more, particularly to address the needs of children with special educational requirements, special education children, children with learning, with language issues, English language learners, that the need for small pull-out space becomes paramount. And so what we find in schools that on paper show capacity, we find every single space is being used. And so it can be misleading, but there is some room for growth of the enrollment there, but not an awful lot of room.
With the locker rooms and the former shop areas, there's no plan to do anything with them?
No. I would say that we had a limited budget to work with, a limited scope. So we tried to be mindful that, you know, of the available resources that we might be able to obtain from the county. So we looked at what were the priorities, what were the things that we need to do. If you look at Garnett, the prior, because it was a high school at one point. So there are locker rooms, the locker room areas were converted into the Judy Center. So there is available space that can be captured at some point in time to add additional classrooms. You can convert the shop area into classrooms, you can convert the locker room areas into classrooms. We felt that those were things that could wait at a future date if we needed to. So there is some capacity that we could add to the building. Particularly with Galena, it is not landlocked like Garnett. There is plenty of space to build out if we needed to, say, add an additional wing or add additional classroom spaces at some point in the future. So there is more room to add on at Galena than, say, Garnett. So that is certainly ideas that we can have moving forward, but what we tried to address were the immediate needs that needed addressing. For instance, the roof and the HVAC, as Dr. Lever stated, they are in incredibly poor condition. And just the fact that there is no natural light in a significant number of the classrooms and, because it was, if you look at the build-out, I don't know if you're familiar with Galena, but if you go into the building, you can see where it was added on, the courtyard is actually the media center. So it built around an existing building and you just filled it in. So as you filled it in, there are no outdoor windows, no natural lighting that comes into the classroom, and it really makes for a dreary classroom space. If you, it's just amazing how just natural lighting is more joyful when it comes to the classroom spaces itself. So we felt like if we were going to replace the HVAC and the roof, that would be an ideal time to address the natural lighting. So that for sure was a priority. Then the next priority was obviously the cafeteria. It has to be addressed, but the question is, what is the will and the availability of resources to Band-Aid and make do for now and consider, you know, adding space later? Or do we, you know, just add on and expand the cafeteria? That's really what I'm trying to search, because right now, we are putting together the ad specs. We're, they've already identified a couple of ideas that's a little bit different than from what we identified when we put the six-year facility strategic plan together. For instance, when we met the first, for the first time a few weeks ago, one of them said, "You know what? We've got a large media center. It's much larger than you would see in a normal-sized elementary school." One of the participants said, "Could we not, maybe not cut it in half, but could we take a portion of that and make it into another instructional space?" And it seemed like that was a possibility. So maybe you look in and you make some choices about, well, then if we do that, do we put off on the ADA for the restaurants? I mean, it's all a matter of, you know, if you had unlimited monies, you could fix everything, but I recognize the fact that that's not the case. So we're trying to be very selective, we're trying to be mindful about the available resources, but we also know we may only have one shot at this for a while. And the question is, you know, to what degree do we address the deficiencies? If we get into a situation where we have to add classrooms, to me, that's a good sign because that would mean that we would potentially be growing, and so the school system would as a result see more funding. And so that maybe that's when it makes sense to be considering some of these other ideas in terms of adding additional classrooms. But for us, for right now, it's a matter of, I think what I heard and what we both heard a couple of weeks ago was, when we threw out the idea of this auxiliary cafeteria, I would say it was met with not such amazing response from the people in the room, because they, what they were concerned about is now they're going to have to figure out a way to supervise two separate areas. And so it's going to create, we're going to fix one problem perhaps, but then create another. Can it be done? Absolutely. But I think that's one of the things that was of concern to some of the teachers in the meeting.
But also, in the future, if we grow, if we did grow, we could make that locker room area, because I don't, I've never been in there, but there are probably larger areas and in most cases, the shop area and the locker room area is larger than, but there could be several classrooms that could be developed there.
Yes.
Fairly easily, I would think.
You can master plan also the HVAC and the electricals so that we don't actually do any work in the space.
It's ready.
Ready to go. And the same thing for the shop area.
Right. Yeah, I just don't want to box ourselves in for any potential growth in the future. I mean, everything around us is growing. There's no way it's not going to filter into the county.
Well, that was a suggestion from the architects, was to think, you know, think beyond today. And if you're going to take the roof off, then consider, as Dr. Lever said, adding some of the stub outs and the electricals so that it's easier, you don't have to come back later. That includes, you know, thinking about the stub outs when, you know, in the, in different parts of the building, so it makes for easier consideration of adding on later. So that's why it helped us to help have somebody else walk us through the best way to address some of these issues.
Is this natural light basically from skylights or is it windows too?
There's a range of costs, and a very effective and relatively inexpensive way to do it is from light tubes. It's been on the market, I would say, ten to twenty years. These are rooftop devices about so big in diameter of highly polished metal tube that comes down and provides a quality of light and an amount of light which you would think it was a natural light, you would think it was a window. I've seen these in operation in interior spaces, and it's really quite extraordinary how much light you get from them. They're about five thousand dollars each per installation as compared to, let's say, fifteen thousand dollars each per installation of a skylight. They're also easier to maintain in terms of flashing, how they penetrate the roof and so forth. So we're looking at that as an option in this project and also definitely at the Rock Hall, the Rock Hall Elementary School roof replacement.
Of course, I always liked windows because I could look at it, daydream where else I wanted to be.
That's old school.
This is for plan, sir. You'd have to go through several classrooms to get to be outside.
So then the last project is on the books are the targeted renovations for Rock Hall. And so I'll turn it over to Dr. Lever for that.
Well, similarly to Galena, this was a high school that then became a middle school, which is now an elementary school. And so there were a number of high school spaces which really are not, haven't been touched and haven't been worked on, they're being used for storage and miscellaneous uses. There are two locker areas. The proposal is that they should be converted into art and music spaces. They are large, they have high ceilings, so they're very appropriate for those uses. There's a locker area which is not being used at all right now, and the idea is to convert that into a science room, capturing a little bit of space from an adjacent smaller room as well. And then there's the original shop area, and the idea there is to turn it into an early childhood center, which would have its own separate entrance and would be subdivided to have small cubicles for small group learning and a large space in the center for group learning. It would also have a space for special education students. It would be located in such a way that students in the regular program could also access some of the facilities there. So this gives us a kind of a tiered approach. These are fairly distinct spaces. The first three that I mentioned, the two locker areas, the changing room areas, I should say, for boys and girls, and when it was a high school, and the area that has the lockers in them, none of those areas have natural light now, so we'd be following the same technique that we, as at Galena, when the roof is replaced, also put in the light tubes. We're treating them as two separate projects. From a perspective of getting approval from the state, this seemed like a more strategic approach because the roof is critical. We had to have that no matter what. If there was any chance that the state wouldn't fund us if we tried to submit it as a single project, we didn't want to lose the possibility of doing the roof. So we broke it up into two projects. However, they're being done by the same architectural team. The roof is, as I mentioned before, just about at the bidding stage. The design of the renovations is well underway, and we're on schedule with that, hopefully to bid in May. And the idea here is that the two projects will coincide in terms of construction. There'll be a high level of coordination between the two projects in terms of design, because obviously when you have roof penetrations into the classrooms, you have to locate those. Contractor for the roof has to know where they're going. And at the same time, coordination of construction activities on site, trying to get through the roof completely during the summer so that it's done by the time the kids come back, and trying to get through the majority of the renovations, especially the demolition work, the messy, noisy stuff, by the time the kids come back. And then it'll be a very staged and phased approach to getting the rest done because you have to maintain safety, circulation and so forth throughout the school. And it will go into the fall through the renovations, we're pretty sure. So that will, I think, would definitely improve these spaces within the school. So that will, I think, would definitely improve, uh, these spaces within the school. Excuse me. It'll tighten up the, uh, building envelope substantially. Um, so I think it will be a, a significant improvement.
And definitely cut down on our maintenance of those two buildings because there has been a significant amount of roof repair that we've had to do, not only at Galena, but at Rock Hall Elementary as well. So I, I think that it protects our assets, it addresses some, uh, major deficiencies that affect the instructional spaces of our schools, not only for our staff, but for our students. And so we feel like this was the best approach for tier-one projects for improving our schools. Now, we have a, a list of other tier-two projects which are noted in the, uh, strategic, the facility strategic, uh, plan, which I shared with you electronically. So I would urge you to take a look at those. Um, there was a sufficient amount of time that we spent into identifying what those tier-two projects were and, uh, which took, takes us all the way into making some improvements at the high school, uh, as well, because the roof at some point is going to have to be replaced there as well. So we, we broke them into three, three tiers of projects and that really laid the blueprint for us moving forward to addressing a lot of the facility deficiencies that we have.
From a budgetary county fiscal impact perspective, uh, cash flow in particular, because you have estimated costs here, but we're not sure how the county dollars come into play versus the state dollars, who pays what first?
Yeah.
If it's concurrent, uh, how, we will need that for the, during the budget process.
Yes. The state only participates in what we call hard costs, as I say, construction costs. And so all soft costs, architectural engineering fees, planning fees and so forth. If there is any, yeah, project management, all of those are covered under the county's budget. Then there's a local match, which in the Kent County is 50% of eligible costs. Um, right now, because the, um, roof project will begin in the summer, construction, and the security vestibules have been pushed into the summer, you're not going to be seeing any construction costs in this fiscal year, FY 2019. Those construction costs roll over to FY 2020. Uh, Galena Elementary School will also be an FY 2020 project. Um, and that will finish construction in the spring of 2021, if all goes according to, to schedule.
And that's mainly because of the staging, um, because we're going to be doing some of those projects while students are in session, so we're going to have to be very careful about staging and, um, and, and how we identify those spaces.
Wouldn't those costs fall into '21 then?
Uh, '20, spring '21.
Yes, that's right. Right?
Okay.
Yeah, we, that's correct. Um, but we can give you a more detailed breakout. Um, we, the process that I've used in terms of the information you have in front of you is just kind of a level, uh, spending sort of by month, just divided by the number of months, which is not the most accurate process because construction follows what we call the S curve, you know, small spending at the beginning, rapid escalation of spending and then tapering off at the end. Um, but it may be the best we can do now. As project manager becomes more involved in the big projects, we can refine these numbers, I think.
But clearly, these are not cash projects. These are very large dollar amounts, so debt will be, have to be established and then we, we have the debt service repayment.
So then I'll end with our final request. Initially, when we brought forward the soft costs, we did not add in the cost for project management and other associated construction costs. I will note that when we did the Garnett project, it was included, all-inclusive with the, the contract that we had with GIP. They provided, they basically provided a one-stop for us. They did project management, they took all of the, the documents, got them ready for the bidding process, which, um, Dr. Lever is helping us with. So it was a matter of it being a smaller project that them able to, they were able to do that. Um, I think it was incredibly evident in terms of when we, we presented to the, to the public school construction and also to Mr. Gorel that these projects would not be moving forward unless we made a commitment to, um, project management. And quite frankly, um, if, if any of us or any of you have been involved in large construction projects, it really is a way to save dollars for all of us in the end. Because we're going to make sure that we get what we paid for. We're going to make sure that there are no, uh, corners that are being cut along the way. And they really can serve in a good way in terms of identifying some efficiencies and some ways to save money. We've already, uh, the Board of Ed has already approved the, uh, contract for our project manager and he has really stepped up and helped us in a number of ways through the planning of the security vestibules and identifying some ways in which we may be able to save money, as Dr. Lever stated, and find other efficiencies that will help us along the way. I think it will, it will, uh, definitely, you know, prove itself worthwhile. So we're asking for the county, uh, to support those costs and, and the soft costs in addition to all of these projects.
Dr. Couch, I'm assuming that the, uh, obviously, uh, all these projects we bid out was the project manager bid out as well?
Um, I included that in the memo, Commissioner Fithian, that the, um, public school, uh, construction does not, or the state does not require competitive procurement for professional services as it relates to school construction. And also, if you look at our KCPS purchasing manual, we also identify clearly in the, uh, purchasing manual that professional services are exempt from the competitive bid process. So this would not be required for the school system to bid out.
Okay, well, I mean, Eric, we do have a $25,000 cap on things like that.
Right, we do too, but this is considered professional services with regard to construction and it's not, it's exempt from the competitive bid process. I added that in the memo because I understand there was a question raised about that.
Just to clarify again, I'm fairly confident you said that, but these are soft costs, right? The project management, so the county is responsible for 100%, correct?
Yes.
So what are we supposed to do now? Motion for that or is this just about our discussion at this moment or?
Well, I think I just wanted to clear understanding moving forward that, you know, that it is part of the soft costs and that the county is in agreement of, you know, now we do use Dr. Lever on a couple of other things with regard to the EFMP. We're not asking for the county to assume any of those costs. If there's costs that we have outside of these construction projects, then the, the school board would be, would incur all costs for those. But anything, Dr. Lever is very detailed in his billing and we can certainly supply that to the county for your own, um, uh, you know, review and, and for your records as well. But he bills us according to each specific project, as will the project manager. So you will be able to see that those costs are associated with each individual construction project.
So what, so what is the anticipated soft cost?
Um, the, the, uh, project manager for both, all the projects that we have identified, this does not include Galena because we haven't gone into that as well. But I think it was not to exceed $65,000 for all of those, the, for all of those, um, projects. And then with Dr. Lever, um, his, his contract was not to exceed, sorry, um, his contract was about the same, not to exceed about six, it was, they were in the, they were very close, $60,000 to $65,000 for both of them. Um, yeah, go ahead. He's got the detail.
Project manager figures for the Rock Hall Elementary roof was $28,000. Uh, for the, uh, security vestibules, $24,000. And then for the Rock Hall Elementary School targeted renovations, it was $33,600. Those are slightly rounded off, but that's basically what it was. So, um, more, a bit more than, uh, Dr. Couch was saying.
About the $80,000.
Right.
Does that, does it point to clarification if it moves in FY '19 or in FY '20?
They're split.
They're split.
Because.
No, I'm disappointed that we have some dollars allocated. FY '19, we've been 400, funded $423,000 and we share in the soft costs. So to try and figure out whether these are additional dollars to the county or they are within that $423,000.
It'll be a, I, I believe we can certainly, um, uh, you know, share the, the details of that, but I believe that's in addition too. Those were not included in those soft costs. The A and E that we came up with was essentially for the architectural, uh, part of it. It did not include project management. Um, now, we did include some of those soft costs when we, uh, talked about the security vestibules. Um, but, you know, I, I think this would be in addition to, but we can certainly, um, add that in. Now, we won't have spent all of those costs, you're right, for this, this fiscal year because everything was delayed much longer than we had planned. So the amount of money that you've allocated for this year will not be totally expended this year.
Okay, yeah, we'll need, the way we do our budgeting is we'll need to know best guess scenario for this fiscal year, how many dollars will be pushed into the following fiscal year?
Right. And Mrs. Merritt and I spoke about that earlier today and we're, we're going to prepare that for her and for you.
I don't have any other questions. I don't, I don't have any other questions either.
Is there a specific item you would like approval from the commissioners?
Uh, just an understanding about the project management because I know that, I just wanted to be very clear and transparent that that is something in addition to what we'd spoken about. I didn't want to, for there to be surprises.
Their approval for the?
I, I would feel more comfortable if it was a clear understanding that as, as we...
Standing in a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what we're trying to figure out. Do you want to vote?
Yes. I, I would, I would like that, yes.
I think we have to make a motion to approve the additional fees.
Soft costs to?
Costs for these projects. For these two projects that are approximately $80,000.
Does that sound good?
Yep. Right, well, there's three projects, yes.
The Rock Hall was really broken into two projects.
But, but, but.
Yeah.
Okay, but it's still part of the $80,000 for the soft costs.
Yeah, the figures that I gave you before for project management, adding up to whatever, yeah.
Two at one school, one at one school.
Right.
The security are at all schools. The security projects will be at all schools. Five schools will be received security vestibules.
CIP projects listed in the memo.
Yes, for all the, yes.
We have not assigned a project manager to Galena yet because of the delays, we don't want to do that until we have the Ed spec ready.
That will be in addition because I don't, we don't have a cost for that at this time. So you're just, all you're, all you're acknowledging is security vestibules, the Rock Hall targeted renovations, the roof, and, um, and so those are the only ones that we have project management contracts with at this point in time. Um, as we move forward with Galena and we start, you know, figuring out what the priorities are going to be, then we'll have a better idea of what is going to be involved with project management and we can have a better idea in terms of asking for a, a, you know, an estimated cost.
Included in the $80,000.
By my rough estimate, that if this project starts, as I think it will, you need about $11,000 for, for project management fees in FY '19. Okay? A total, I'm estimating, uh, based on 2% of construction cost for project management is about 90, about $100,000 for project management fees. It's spread over 18 months.
What I would recommend is approval of project management services for the above-mentioned, uh, aforementioned projects. But when we can get, narrow down, nail down the dollars in which fiscal year, then that would be a separate motion because.
Right.
That will be a budget amendment to our current budget.
Right, and, and what I would say is all of these are, are a little bit of a moving target because we've estimated what the costs are going to be for construction, but we're not going to know the actual costs until we go out to bid and we have an actual hard number cost. So all of these could change, you know, slightly to the better or to the worse. It, it really just depends. We feel that we've done a very good job in terms of estimating those costs, but, but they are somewhat flexible and they can move up or down slightly based on what happens when we...
You never know until you put it out to bid.
Exactly.
There's a great deal of uncertainty in the construction market right now and it's because there's so much activity on the western shore, particularly in Baltimore City. Uh, it's building 28 schools over about four years. That's having a huge impact on the, the availability of construction services as well as design services to some extent. We don't know what the spillover effect is on the eastern shore. Draw from a different market here, but whether there will be an impact or not, we just don't know. Also, Kent hasn't done a major project in quite some time. We don't know whether it's, how its geographic will affect the pricing. And until we actually get it out on the street, we just actually don't know. So there are these unknowns.
Yeah.
How did you choose the project manager?
Chosen by qualifications and I have to say, it's extraordinarily difficult to find or available for this kind of work. Uh, this person came highly recommended to me. I checked his references. He was a facility manager for University of Maryland Eastern Shore for 20 years. He set up their capital program, basically. Ran it, I've carried out a number of major projects. He's a registered architect. He also has done a number of private projects in the, uh, Wycomico.
He also worked for Queen Anne's. He did, he oversaw the Kent Island, uh, project and Queen Anne's as well. And I, I would just note that, um, we, I, I want to pat Dr. Lever on the back for helping us find someone because it, there were a number of people we could have found from the western shore, but we would have added a great deal more with mileage and travel, um, in terms of getting them to come to Kent. But the other requirement that we were told is that the final approval had to come from Mr. Gorel, Gorel, from, uh, Public School Construction. Uh, the requirement was for us to submit his resume and all of his credentials and they ultimately had to approve the project manager. So we could identify someone and, and do a good job in, in identifying the, the individual that would be, uh, overseeing the projects, but the final, uh, approval had to come from Public School Construction.
Okay, so let's make a motion to approve the soft costs. Can I just say for the three? Approximately costs of about $80,000 based off of whatever the...
Yeah.
So I would also include in the motion the sole source.
And the sole source.
See, I, yeah, yeah, it, it does concern me a little bit when we tried to, I think what you were trying to say earlier, trying to narrow down specific costs. I think if you tried to narrow it down, um, to a dollar amount, I mean, we're not going to run up the budget, obviously. We're not going to do that, but I, I think that there are some soft costs that, that potentially are going to come in. I'll be happy to come and present to you at any point in time that we, uh, feel like we're, um, you know, exceeding those. But I think what I'm trying to understand, or at least get some conceptual approval from you, is that, that the, the project manager and all of the additional constructional soft costs will be assumed by the county. That's, that's really where I'm going. And if you want me to come in at a regular basis and present, I'm happy to do that too. I, you know, I'm just trying to do what's, what's, um, what's more expedient and, uh, a basic awareness and understanding.
So again, I, I would recommend a motion that would conceptually approve this, but as soon as the fiscal year impact is determined, because like I said, that will be a budget adjustment to our current year budget and as well, we'll need the information for the following year to at least put a number in the budget. So that can come next meeting or two meetings or during the budget process for sure.
Yeah, I, I think we were just trying to somewhere come up with a...
Sure.
Not to exceed.
A figure that...
Right. So what do we do this?
We don't want to say $80,000 and then... We don't want to say 80,000 and then you come back with, now this is now 200,000, and you approved it.
I understand that, and so maybe the best thing to do is just get a basic understanding moving forward. We've already approved it. Obviously, it's going to come out of our budget, and if we, you know, we know we had to do this regardless of whether the county helped us or not, and it's going to, it will obviously impact how much fund balance we have moving forward into FY20. So, I mean, ultimately, these are costs that have to be paid because we feel it's in the best interest of the taxpayer and it's the best interest of moving forward with these projects. So, as long as we have a basic understanding, then I'm happy to come back and provide to you an accounting of where we are moving forward. I'm happy to do that. And we've already spoken about getting those honed in, as particularly as we've delayed with starting these projects, because like I said, we'd hope to have already started construction with the security vestibils, but that's not going to happen until school is out. So, that's where we're at.
It sounds like there's already a certain amount of money that's allocated that we haven't used, which can be so, I mean, could we, you know, say $100,000, and if you find out through something that it's something big time different, then we want to know about it.
Right, absolutely.
During the budget process right now, 423, Pat, you said?
423.
And generally, as we go into the budget, we know, we have a projection of what we're going to spend by the end of the year, and that way, we know how to calculate what can be spent next year.
Right, and we've worked really closely with Mrs. Merritt in terms of, we spent a great deal of time talking in the last week in terms of what we need moving forward. Just trying to be transparent, that's my only, my...
Well, we are, too. We're trying to...
And this is a deviation from past procedure, correct, the project management piece?
The requirement, yes, although it was included with the Garnet project. Gyp provided those services to us.
That's the request.
Somebody needs to make a motion.
He's trying.
I make a motion to move forward this project until we get the details of the dollar amounts to be added to the 400,000 that was already set aside.
And approval to use the company as recommended for the project management services.
Services, and approval to use the...
You said project, not area.
Right.
By the Board of Education. I second it.
Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and if you have any other questions about the projects, please, you know how to find us, and we'll keep you posted on what we learn with Galena, and I'll be happy to come and present when we move further along with the educational specifications process. This is all new to me. I'm learning myself.
Can you and Brian stick around for when we talk about the football field?
We have a couple other things on the agenda that you probably...
Republic Works.
I'm planning on staying, so I don't, I guess Brian's planning on staying, too.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We now have Kent Conservation and Preservation Alliance. Anyone want to let our support?
Elizabeth Watson.
Elizabeth Watson. You're not Janet. I know you're not Janet. I was looking around for Janet, but I didn't see her.
I got in the park a long time ago when I was proselytizing for the bridge, et cetera. And congratulations to all three of you for election, and it's my first time in front of you. I'm just here to ask you to sign a letter, so there's no money involved at all for your end of it. But I have to tell you, I did enjoy sitting through the 4H talk. I am a 4Her, and I really am grateful for the background I got in my small rural community.
Very impressive group we have there.
You are, you are so blessed, and in fact, I think it really is, it's the people example of why I'm excited about the project that we're working on with Kent Conservation and Preservation Alliance. And that is about, not quite two years ago, the commissioners gave us a small, very small grant, seed grant, $2,000, and it enabled us to bring in a great deal of money, mostly spent here in the county for contractors. We hired locally Washington College and also Barton Ross, architect and planner here, and brought in an expert from elsewhere, and we have completed, we're not ready to announce it yet because it's not, you know, it's in the last production, but we've done a study of the county to look at the historic landscape. And I think, we all know that Kent County is special, but I think at this point, we can now tell you officially on some of the cultural landscape pieces of this, that Kent County is indeed quite special. And we started looking at this in the fall and thinking that we really needed people to understand this in a better way than just a big document, which it is. It's huge. Costs a lot to print. And so, we're going to go after money to create a film, a video. Maryland Public Television's expressed interest, and I've done a film. I did a film about 25 years ago on Chesapeake Bay. I know what we're getting into, and I had to be dragged into it kicking and screaming, but I'm a believer now, and Dale Owens and Janet, everybody's really pushing to try to do this because we think there are stories out in this landscape. You know, this is a place that evolved for 400 years. You've never had industrialization and urbanization in the way that most other colonial rooted landscapes did. You know, age of sale ended, and we didn't have access anymore, and we're 15 minutes too far from anywhere. And so, all of a sudden, we've got a landscape, and it's rich. You know, we made, we were not in the war, in the Revolutionary War, I just heard Adam Goodheart on this, and we had, you know, we got wealthy in the colonial times. And that wealth and that pattern is in that landscape still to this day through 19th century technology change and all the way to now, where the kids in our 4H are going to go and take us into the future with new technologies and new ways of growing food. So, it's really a very important landscape from now to, you know, and we're saying it's a continuity, it's a very technical thing, that there's some people who work internationally on continuing landscapes like ours. Ours is really, really rare. So, we want to figure out how to tell people this. So, we're going to the Maryland Heritage Areas Authority. You may know that we're part of the Stories of the Chesapeake Heritage Area, which is four counties. Kent is with Caroline Talbot and Queen Anne's. And so, the Maryland Heritage Areas Authority has a non-capital grant available, and we're anchoring our fundraising on that grant, and we need your letter. So, how's that?
It's a letter for support.
I make a motion that we approve the county's support letter for the Maryland Heritage Areas Authority, and I second it.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks very much.
We now have, he knows who we have.
It's all in the list. Good evening, Commissioner Shelly. I wanted to take my time this evening for my departmental update and give you an idea of what's going on with Next Generation 911 across the state and how it's going to affect Kent County. I've been kind of putting this off for a while based on some legislation that was coming this year and some work that the Commission to Advance Next Generation 911 in the state's been doing. So, as a little explanation for those who haven't heard this before, Next Generation 911 is a system that will modernize legacy analog-based E911 infrastructure to secure Internet protocol-based networks. It allows public safety answering points 911 centers to receive text, video, and data from callers in an emergency. Next Generation 911 will give us the ability to send, receive, send and receive voice, video, text, and data, increase deaf hearing impaired accessibility via text messaging and video relay services, caller's location identification for landline wireless and avoid calls, and wireless and voice calls. We have a times when we don't get good caller identification, location identification now. It'll give us call routing based on caller's location, transmission of telematics data, transfer of calls from PSAP to PSAP, 911 Center, 911 Center, with the collected data, and real-time acquisition and transfer of that data to the first responders on the street, to the officers and the EMS providers and the firefighters. Next Generation 911 is being driven by NINA, the National Emergency Numbers Association, and they're setting the standards. We, current infrastructure used by PSAP now was made in 1968 and effectively hasn't changed since then. Analog-based infrastructure gives PSAP limited capacity to identify the location of a call from a mobile device or recognize the technology generating the call in order to route the call to the appropriate responder in a timely manner. Next Generation 911 has these examples for: videos from cameras, prepositioned locations throughout a jurisdiction, video from moving cameras, either on officers or in vehicles or in drones, web-based telephony alternatives that use IP-based technology to circumvent traditional phone lines, so we're talking Skype, text, landline, video gaming devices, or other information sharing and notification learning applications, map-based applications where residents may report problems or issues during an emergency, crowdsourced images or, and video, sorry, graphic videos of both disaster and criminal activity, social media pages, and video streams being shared to incite or motivate group-based behaviors. So, if you look at all that stuff and you think what's going to be coming into the 911 center, the next thought is what we're doing to our dispatchers. So, it's going to take a lot more training for those people. It's going to take a different mindset of people that we're going to have to be training. There's an idea of whether or not we're going to actually receive that information in the 911 center, or we create a regional fusion center. All those questions haven't been asked yet. When we go online with this, we won't be taking all that information right away. We have to set the standards and figure that out. We'll be taking texts at the beginning, very shortly, but the rest of that won't be coming right away, but when the standard is set, it will be there. So, the training's going to need to be there, and the idea of treating our public safety answering point employees differently is going to have to, is going to have to be a part of it, too. GIS is the main part of Next Generation 911. We've been working really well with planning, with funding from the numbers board to hire consultants to look at two proposals that we've received. Each county's received a proposal from AT&amp;T and from Motorola. Based on those proposals, the consultant is looking for compliance to NINA I-3 standards, interoperability, cybersecurity, and cost. There's potential for as much as $100,000 increase in the current $60,000 annual budget that we pay Verizon. That will also be a period of time where we're going to have to pay Verizon and whoever's giving us the Next Generation Core Services also. The nine counties on the shore, I'm sorry, eight counties on the shore, not including Cecil County's not on the same system as we are with Verizon, but eight counties on the shore, as long as one of them is still on the system, we're all going to have to pay for those prices for Verizon until we can get all nine, all eight counties off the system. So, knowing that, the counties on the shore are working very closely together so that we all come off at the same time to limit the double paying for Verizon and whatever the next gen provider is. So, there's some good news behind this as far as some legislation goes. There's three bills in the legislature right now that are looking very positive at this point. There's SB 5 and there's House Bill, House Bill's also to go along with them, but SB 5 is the Gory and Gruesome Maryland Public Information Reform Act. This bill seeks to limit access to 911-related data received by PSAP that relates to domestic violence or gory and gruesome video or photographs. There's a Next Generation 911 Specialist Benefit Parity, so are dispatchers. This bill seeks to treat public safety 911 communication specialists equally with other first responders and the benefits that they eligible receive. They're not treated the same way that law enforcement officers and firefighters and EMTs are, and seek to correct that. And the last bill is Carl Hanslaw, submitted by Senator Kagan from Montgomery County, who's been spearheading this. This overall Next Generation 911 bill, the particular highlight is the adjustment to the 911 fee to help pay for increased costs of next gen 911 services. The adjustment includes the ability for counties to increase their portion of the fee, and the bill also seeks to expand the authority of the Emergency Numbers Sustenance Board to pay for Next Generation 911 recurring costs, which right now they can't pay for. Legislation doesn't, or the current legislation does not let the numbers board pay for our recurring costs that we're paying Verizon. If this bill were passed, then we could use those funds to pay for these next generation services. So, that's kind of where we stand right now. Over the next 30 days, with the legislature's going to be big on where this goes, likely we'll be making a decision, or have to make a decision here in Kent County, probably in the last quarter of this year, who we're going to go with for next gen services, with an implementation date of six to eight months after that. So, that's kind of where we stand, and it's a lot to take in. I can speak to you personally at any time if you have any other questions about it, or I can answer any questions about it right now.
So, where are the other eight counties on it?
We're all exactly the same footing. Queen Anne's County's a little bit ahead. They had some software stuff, software upgrades put in three, four months ago. We're having ours next month. But we're roughly all in the same spot on the shore, and we're trying to maintain that, and we work really well together. We're trying to maintain that so we can reduce those costs. The contractor, the consultant that we've hired is, knows that's what we want to do, and that's what we're going to treat it. We're, there's four counties in the state that have already signed contracts with AT&amp;T to go next gen services with them, and Prince George's County has the contract right now pending with the numbers board for Motorola. The numbers board is hoping to have one provider throughout the state to make it easier to maintain, but it doesn't, that's going to happen, and there's a big price difference between the two. Other questions I can answer you? One other update for the department that I'll give you is, we did some data on the last six weeks of 2018 as far as ambulances response.
I was just, I was going to ask you that after we got off of this.
So, system-wide, we saw about an 8% decrease in the amount of time it took to get to a call, to arrive on scene.
Hopefully because of the additional three EMTs that we hired.
I think, you know, statistically, it probably doesn't mean a whole lot, six weeks out of the year, but that was the change. So, we're going to keep monitoring that, and I'll give you an update on it this weekend.
At least it's heading in the right direction.
It went in the right direction, and it could be significant because, you know, especially with Galena, because it doesn't, we don't get as many calls in Galena as other places. For it so far to affect it that much, I think it means it's working well. You know, we can look back and see what other things might have affected it, but for right now, that's the one that sticks out.
I'm at that.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now have Pat Merritt.
Good evening. I have a couple things tonight. I got a lot of... So, we started out with the December financial statements. So, these are results for the first six months. We have revenues, we've had our revenues, it's under $1 million higher than budget, and we'll talk about reasons for that in a second. And on the expenditure side, we can see that our expenditures have come in about $934,000 under budget. So, halfway through the year, we're about $1,009 better off the budget than we, than we thought we would be. And if we look at some of the reasons why that's happening, on the revenue side, it's almost all income tax, and we're going to talk, have a presentation on the estimates for the income tax for FY19 and FY20, and we'll talk about that a little more and why that's happening. The recordation and the property transfer, while they're still up, they're not up as much as they were three months ago. So, we saw a big bubble with an increase in those, and they're coming down, so hopefully they'll hold and come in favorable. Our property tax is about $89,000 favorable. Our interest income is up, and those are the other variances. There are other local fees are down, but that's mostly a timing difference. So, those are the items that make up the $981,000 on the revenue side. On the expense side, let's see, can I, okay, so the largest favorable variance is in salaries and benefits. From highest to lowest, you can see what's contributing to that. It's mostly turnover and health insurance, and you can see the other items that make that up. The second largest favorable variance at $404,000 is in our operating expenses, and these are the services and supplies that we buy, and the largest favorable variances are in our highways and our streets, detention center and building maintenance. The detention center, I think it's mostly the prisoner expenses due to the populations, highways and streets. Some of that's a timing difference with when they're going to, and some of it is that we haven't had all the winter costs in here. This is through December, so we'll see how that shakes out. The contingency is $140,000 favorable, but I do believe this is as of December, and I think we've approved some rather large items in January and February, so that variance is going to be... January and February, so that, that variance is going to be gone. Um, so that's what contributes to the nine hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar favorable variance. Any questions on the general one? Okay. Water and wastewater services? So our revenues are about ten thousand dollars favorable, um, and it's mostly all in our septic services, and I think we have um, one additional hauler this year, so I think that's what's making of the majority of that. On the expense side, our expenses are unfavorable by about sixteen thousand, most of that in the operating side, and we'll take a look at that. But bottom line, our subsidy percentage is at twenty-three point seven percent as opposed to the budget of twenty-three point five, so we're just slightly higher than budget. And that is mostly, if you look at the variance analysis, uh, it's mostly due to electric lab fees and chemicals, and again, we may see some of that, some of that may be a timing difference, so we may see some of that dissipate by the end of the year. Any questions on the water wastewater? Okay, and just to take a look at our capital budgets, um, let's see, let's look at the expenditure side. We have budgeted uh, just a little under four million dollars in capital projects, and you can see the list of them there. Uh, the first column is the budget, and we actually, um, through the first six months, we've only spent about a hundred and twenty-four thousand on these projects, so most of these costs are going to come in the back half of the year. Um, and our water wastewater projects, we have a budget of twenty-six, two million six hundred ninety-three thousand, and we spent at, through the first six months, about six hundred and thirty thousand. So those are the highlights of the financial, um, statements for the first six months. Okay, and the other thing that I wanted to share with you tonight is we've looked at our top two revenues, our property taxes and our income taxes. We wanted to get these numbers to you as early in the process as possible, so let's see if I can find this file. We'll start with the property taxes. Okay, for FY two thousand and nineteen, we think we're going to come in about two hundred thousand dollars less than budget, and this is mostly due to appeals and decreased assessments that happened during the year. Um, it's really very hard to tell at the beginning of the year, you know, what those are going to be. Um, the good news in FY twenty twenty is that we think we're going to see about a five hundred and sixty thousand dollar increase over the FY nineteen budget. Uh, the assessable base is up about one point two-five percent, and we had a homestead credit uh, decrease of about a hundred and sixty thousand, so, um, so that's.
Less people are using that than they have in the years past.
Yeah, it means that the um, the assessable base and the taxable base are coming together, so there's very few credits left, almost everybody's being taxed at their assessable, you know, the, the assessable and the taxable are almost the same, so. Um, and just as a, a background and a point of reference, the county property tax rate is uh, one dollar point oh-two-two, um, we have the seventh highest rate in the state, we have the seventh, the second highest rate on the shore. If we were to increase that property tax rate one penny, it would generate just a little over three hundred thousand. Okay, so that's where we think we'll end on property tax, or we'll start with property tax for the budget. On the income tax side. I hope you can see this. This is a report that the state publishes, sorry, okay, at the end of every um, tax year, and a tax year goes from January to December, and all the taxes that are related to monies that are earned there are, you know, associated with, with the tax year. Um, we get it on a fiscal year, and we'll talk about those differences. So on tax year two thousand and seventeen, which is the first column here, these are all the counties in Baltimore City and Maryland, and it shows what their income tax numbers were, um, what the increase was over last year, and the percentage increase. So the Kent County line that's highlighted, um, our income tax is up about eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, which is an eight point two percent increase, which is one of the largest increases we've seen in a very long time. And if you compare us to the state as a whole, you can see that statewide it went up five point eight percent. So we're, here in Kent County, we're doing a little bit better than the average of the state, and it shows you last year's, if you look at the tax year two thousand and sixteen, compared to fifteen, and you walk it back one more year, you can see that we had a one point four percent decrease in our income tax, while the state had a point six percent increase. So there's really not a real strong correlation between state performance and Kent County performance, um, which makes it hard to estimate.
Well, that was all right, you know.
We are, we don't track with them, but good news, um, you know, for tax year two thousand and seventeen is the eight point two percent increase. So if we also, um, usually try and look at the number of returns, so the same table shows all of the jurisdictions, and these are the number of tax returns. So for tax year two thousand and seventeen, just under nine thousand tax returns were filed, which was two less than last year. So we had an increase of eight percent of income and a decrease of the number of returns filed.
What about that?
Yeah, um, so, um, if we walk it back one more year and look at sixteen compared to fifteen, you can see that we had lost a hundred and eighty-six taxpayers then, we had a two percent decrease, and statewide, they were pretty much flat with just forty-nine new tax returns. So those are kind of the statewide stats. So if we try and look at what that means to us, this table shows for the last six years, on the left-hand side here, it shows from tax year two thousand and twelve to two thousand and seventeen, it shows the tax, the income tax dollars, it shows the dollar increase, and it shows the percentage increase. So you can see, we've really been on a roller coaster. In two thousand and twelve, our income tax was up eighteen percent, and it dropped eleven percent, and then went back up five percent, and it dropped four percent, it dropped one percent, and now we're up eight percent. So it has really been volatile, and it, on the right-hand side of the schedule, it shows the tax returns. So you can see from two thousand and twelve, two thousand and fifteen, we kind of had slow steady growth, one percent, one percent, two percent, one percent, now, we've had a two percent decline, and we're pretty much flat with the two less returns. So, so what's going on? So it's hard to get to what's going on in Kent County, because they don't give us um, income type specific information, um, until several years, um, after it's passed, so we have some historical information, but we really don't know what happened in two thousand and seventeen yet. So the best we can do is look to the state. So the Maryland Board of Revenue Estimates, um, they've, they've said that capital gains are up twenty-three percent statewide in tax year seventeen, and that the wages and salaries are up three and a half percent. So what we can take away from that is we, we have to assume that, that most of that eight percent, or a large part of that eight percent is capital gains, which it's good that it's going up, but it also means that it's highly volatile and it's probably not going to recur. And if we look at, let's see if I can get this all on one. If you look at what has happened, if we go back to two thousand and twelve, we can get to Kent County's capital gains information, so in two thousand and twelve, Kent County capital gains were up a hundred and eighteen percent, and if you look at the total year for two thousand and twelve, in total, income tax was up eighteen percent, so there's a real strong correlation there. But then in tax year two thousand and thirteen, the capital gains went down fifty-one percent, and our total income tax revenue went down eleven percent. So there seems to be a real correlation between the capital gains and what happens in the total. Um, but what you can also see is that every time there's strong growth, then there's, there's a backslide and we have a decrease. So if we look forward to try and figure out what's going to happen in the future, um, let's see here. Yeah, okay, so, sorry, so in tax year eighteen, so we just finished talking about tax year seventeen, what we think is going to happen is that the capital gains are going to go down. Um, we think roughly eight percent of that is probably six percent of that, or five percent of that is probably capital gains, we think we'll probably lose that. On the plus side, the federal tax reform that was just put in place is going to, um, Maryland, um, when you pay your Maryland income tax, you're going to pay more. Um, the deductions that were limited on the federal side were, are going to allow you not to take those deductions in Maryland, and because Maryland didn't increase the standard deduction the way the Fed did, you're going to pay more Maryland tax. So what we're seeing so far is that, um, people filing in Maryland are doing better on their federal return, and they're paying more on their state return, so, so we will get more money. We think it's going to be about five percent. So unfortunately, while we're up that five percent, what we're going to lose in the capital gains, I think is probably going to come close to being a wash. Um, we are expecting that the wage growth will remain slow and steady, so for tax year two thousand and eighteen, we're looking at total growth, total growth of about two percent. So all of this conversation has been about tax year, and now we have to translate it to fiscal year. So let me go back one slide. Tax year two thousand and nineteen just started in January and it's going to end in December. And so, tax year two thousand and nineteen income, this shows the months that the county will receive payments, um, it'll shows the fiscal year that we're going to receive it and shows what the payments are for. So you can see that tax year two thousand and nineteen money will be received by the county in fiscal year nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. It takes that long for us to get it. So in May, June, and July of, of calendar year nineteen, we're going to receive the first quarter withholding, we're going to receive the second quarter withholding, and then in two thousand and twenty, we'll receive, in November, we'll receive the third quarter, the fourth quarter, and the unallocated distributions, and in fiscal year, um, twenty-twenty-one, we'll receive the final reconciling distributions for tax year nineteen. And those are the big volatile distributions in January and November that when they really true up the tax returns. So it's hard to, um, to take that tax year information and spread it out, but that's why there's not a big correlation there. So when we look at our fiscal year estimates for two thousand and nineteen, that's going to include revenue from tax year seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, and um, we're going to have projected growth of about eight hundred thousand. Um, it's six percent over fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, and that's primarily due to the capital gains growth from tax year seventeen that we just got in November and, and January. Going forward to twenty twenty, that's going to include the revenue, um, from eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. Um, we think that we're going to have, uh, still see that slow steady growth with, with wage, and we think we'll have about a hundred and twenty-five thousand or one percent growth in fiscal year two thousand and nineteen. So that's an awful lot of numbers, and an awful lot of, one more slide here, I'm sorry. The county income tax rates. Kent County's, um, income tax rate is two point eight five percent, we have the seventeenth highest rate in the state, we have the sixth highest rate on the shore. If we were to raise it to the maximum of the three point two percent, it would generate about one point six million over three years, because it would take us three years to get it. So if we look at that in total and what that really means to us, if we were to summarize that all up, uh, that's not it, excuse me, okay. So if we look at our largest revenue sources, uh, property tax and income tax, um, our budget for two thousand and nineteen was roughly forty-three million six hundred and seventy. Uh, we think that we're going to go down two hundred thousand in property tax, we're going to go up eight hundred thousand in income tax, so, um, all things being equal, we should be about six hundred thousand to the good in, in our revenue sources in FY nineteen. When we look to FY twenty, we think that we're going to see a pickup in, um, property taxes of seven hundred and sixty thousand, income tax of about a hundred and twenty-five, so a total increase of about eight hundred and eighty-five thousand.
That's better than some years, we've seen.
It is better, it's, um, it's moving in the right direction. It's a complicated model, but, um, I'm glad the Board of Ed is here tonight, we wanted to try and get these numbers, I guess, out there as soon as we had them, as soon as we had estimates, so that everybody would know kind of what our financial footing is. Um, these are, you know, our first cut at the numbers, they may, we're going to get one more significant income tax distribution, and we may refine that number, but the property tax number is pretty much, pretty much set, so.
Like I said, we've seen it worse.
Yes, we have.
Is there any special reason we're at two point eight five?
Um.
I'm just there.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember what it was when I came here twenty years ago, I think it's been raised once. Again, can you remember the last time it was raised around now? I don't want to speak out of, I can.
I honestly, myself, don't remember raising the income tax, but maybe we did. I, I know we've raised property tax like the year that state took their highway money away from us, we've replaced it with five cents, a five cent increase.
I can get you the historical tax rates going back for the last couple decades, if you'd like to see the history of it.
Just was wondering, um, five or that, not three, or three point two, or, um, maybe we're the highest in property, but we're near with the lowest in income tax, but in which. Raise our income, and we're already up there in property, then we are going to be highest, the highest overall. If you raised eight, would you be, and I'm just asking this as a question, not saying that this is what's happening or anything, but if you raised income and lowered property a little bit, would that be better or worse?
It depends on how much of each tax, I mean, we can certainly run some scenarios. Um, the property tax, if you look at the magnitude of those numbers, uh, you know, we get thirty-one million from property tax, so that's certainly much larger share of our revenue than the income tax at thirteen six, so I, we could certainly, you know, the models are easy to run, we could look at what it would be like, um, for the property tax, I think we said one penny is three hundred now.
Right. That would be both ways.
Yeah, either way, absolutely. So, and the income tax, if we raised it, it would generate, what did I say, one point six?
Over three years.
Over three years.
What the property tax would be, I mean, yeah, the property tax would be.
Three hundred in, immediately in that year.
Year, but the one point six is over three years.
Yes.
But it's continual, is that right?
Once you get there.
Once you get there, it's, it would still be more.
And something that the previous board has looked at is if you change one of the tax rates versus the other tax rate, it may be a different demographic that is paying more or less, it's not necessarily even. It's property owners versus, versus income earners, so.
The income's more volatile.
Yeah, you can see that the income tax is definitely the more volatile revenue stream, absolutely, the property tax is more of a, is steadier.
Steady. But the income tax people, I always felt, most of the time don't see like they see property taxes.
They see it a little bit at a time.
Depending on if you're the owner or the renter.
Right, right.
Right, but I mean, you don't get a bill for your income tax unless you didn't withhold enough at the end of the year or something, but property taxes bill. You pay gradually, where property taxes is one. It's one big chunk of money that.
And I think with the change in the tax laws, that's also contributed to the volatility, everybody's trying to figure out what's going to be the best scenario for them under this new normal, and so I think we're going to see a little more volatility, ball shakes out.
But if you were going to change, like, the income tax rate, when does that have to be done?
During the budget.
During the budget.
I can get you that calendar, too, it definitely has to be before July first, and I want to say if they can see, it might be May for them as well.
That's the same way with property tax.
We just have to notify the state, and that way they push out the correct information and structure their systems appropriately. But the, yes, the proper time for those choices are during the budget process. That's all I had, unless you have any other questions?
Good with me.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's time for the Public Works Director.
Okay, thanks.
You know that Maryland's playing Iowa right now.
Stop that. Good evening, gentlemen, Charlie. Got four things on the agenda for you today. My keepers here. Uh, the first item is the Georgetown Sewer Project Connection Schedule. Um, the project, of course, is under construction right now, we did an initial notification to the property owners that the project was coming online and gave them some background information. Uh, at some point, we need, we'll do a second notification to the property owners to let them know what the schedule is for actually making the connection to the completed system. Um, typically and historically, we've either provided a nine-month or twelve-month connection period after it's, you're available to connect to the systems. That allows times for the property owners to make arrangements with a plumber, because they're making the connection from the house to their grinder pump, and you don't want to force everybody. And you don't wanna force everybody to do it in a short period of time, because then limit a number of contractors, and prices go up in accordance with that. When I put the, the memo together for you, we were looking at a schedule for the sewer extension to be ready and complete for connections on April first. Uh, since that time, uh, we've been notified by Delmarva Power that they're instituting some changes and requirements on the actual connection to the electric meter box. Uh, this came about after the design was all done, uh, and the projects on Kent Island, the South Park Kent Island, or a whole bunch of grinder pumps in Goldsboro. So they've established a policy, basically using the requirements on the Kent Island project. Basically, what they don't wanna have is, uh, making connections to older meter boxes that have the lower amperage, hundred, a hundred amp or less. The boxes, the meter boxes will have to be upgraded in order for the connection to be made. So now we're looking at the readiness for a connection about mid-June, because we've also run into weather issues. That's why they haven't really been doing much work in February during the bad weather conditions, because they're at the point where they are ready to start putting the individual grinder pits in the yards, and the problem, they go in there, one, be trying to pump out the pit, try to get the pump in, plus they're gonna be tearing up the yards of these folks, and we don't wanna get, uh, that, have to deal with that. So they're looking to hold off, uh, to, uh, in pretty much the month of March till we get better weather and drier weather, uh, to pick up on that. They'll be doing some other little projects. Well, I wish. And we paid our dues last year, so I'm hoping mini drought maybe, I don't know. So.
Years now if we had drought or not towards the ride.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. So, um, basically what we're making a recommendation is a nine-month connection time for the residents to complete their connection to the public sewer system, as the county's gonna be incurring costs for the reserve capacity that we purchased in the Galena wastewater plant, which is now operational, and operation the conveyance system and debt service on that. Way it would work is after the system's ready for connections, uh, we would notify the homeowners in advance of that, and they would be charged a vacant lot fee, uh, once the system's available for connection, which essentially is half the regular sewer rate, uh, because these customers do not have water, it's just for sewer. And until a connection is made, or the time limit of the nine or twelve months is reached, then their full rate would come into effect as a regular service customer. So that's what the recommendation is we're looking at, if you wanna consider a nine-month connection period.
Is the pumping station done up there?
The pu, the main pumping station?
And by the restaurant?
Um, it's pretty much completely, they have the, the pit in and everything, the electrical hasn't been connected and everything, so it's not operational. But, uh, some of the major construction, they've been doing some of the, uh, connections of the Marina, uh, piping system to get it to the, that pump station.
Do you know offhand, and I just FYI, I was just curious, how many hookups is, is on that connection system?
The main system, uh, we've got, forty-eight are grinder pumps, and I think there's another twelve that are actually gravity line closer up to Galena. There's a small development up there. And then on top of that, there's multiple EDs associated with the Marina and the Kitty Night House, which are commercial.
I, I think nine months seems to be fair, and if, you know, we find out it's not, we can, we can work with it, but, uh, I would think nine months is long enough.
Okay.
You fellows agree?
Agree, yeah.
Make a motion to, uh, just, uh, give them nine months from the, from the time they're allowed to hook up to when they need to be hooked up.
Second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The second item I have on the agenda is regarding a discussion item on the Kennedyville Water System and Sewage Pump Station Study. There's some history here with the development, um, the villages at Kennedyville, where back in two thousand and five, the county entered into a public works agreement with a developer development of eighty-four residential units in two phases, the first phase being twenty-five units and the balance in the second phase, plus a small commercial property, uh, there. During the phase one development, during the phase one, the developer was to install a water softening system at the water treatment plant. And all twenty-five units have been constructed in phase one. However, the developer went bankrupt and failed to install the water treatment system and surrendered a letter of credit in the amount of a hundred and sixty-four thousand, sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. In two thousand and thirteen, a second public works agreement was signed with the developer that wanted to purchase the development, and he was working off of phase two. And the developer accepted responsibility to, one, install a replacement public water well prior to the issuance of the fourth building permit, and the remaining infrastructure improvements, an iron removal system, a water, groundwater storage tank, and refurbishment of a sewer pump station after the issuance of the twentieth building permit. To date, only three building permits have been issued, and none of the infrastructure improvements have been constructed. So basically what the county has done, they did the expansion of the Kennedyville Wastewater Treatment Plant, provided that capacity. And then in lieu of charging allocation fees to the developer of the Village of Kennedyville, allowed that developer to construct infrastructure improvements that I mentioned, at periods of time through the development, before it started stressing the infrastructure as a whole for Kennedyville, both water and sewer. So these infrastructure improvements are needed for the, uh, full development of Kennedyville. They just haven't happened yet. So, going forward, in any discussions with the developer to try to get that development finalized, which would be in our interest, we need to have a better handle because of the dated information that we have of the study to determine whether there's other technology that may be necessary, looking at historical data that we've had in terms of water and wastewater usage, to see whether those improvements are still maybe valid. And two, um, as was kinda mentioned with the discussion on the board, uh, construction costs from back then are way out of date. Back then, the economy was booming, we went through the recession, contractor prices dropped, a lot of contractors dropped out of the market. Now times are good, and prices on construction are going up very high. So, what we did is we reached out to, uh, an engineer, McCrone, who was involved in the original studies, uh, because they have all that data at hand, and asked them to give us a price to reevaluate the, uh, design assumptions that were made for these type of improvements, and update the costs, so that if the county decides any other sharing as far as a modified public works agreement, we know what we're getting ourselves into if we're going to be, uh, doing some of those improvements if necessary, or what kind of cost sharing may remain with the developer. And the cost, uh, from that proposal that they put together was nineteen thousand, nine hundred dollars, uh, to do that kinda work and revisit all that. So I wanted to kinda update you on that. There's some long history with that. I know there's, there's been some interest expressed, uh, by, uh, the developer of the property to try to renegotiate that public works agreement, uh, so that they can get the housing to what, I guess, believe what they have affordable, uh, level for them to sell those homes. Uh, but we need to have some of that information in order to make an informed decision. Any questions?
Yeah, I, I don't, you go first, Tom.
Well, this GB Kennedyville, that's the one that's there now.
Yeah.
Okay. And why has, he's got his three permits, he can't do anything else till he built, till he, till he replaces well?
Yes, do the well, yes.
So what's the holdup there?
Uh, I don't, I think from a cost standpoint, the way he's looking at it.
He wants to renegotiate that?
Yes, perhaps, yes.
All right, you said they have three building permits. Can he build three houses currently, or do they have to wait?
He's already, he's already built those homes.
Oh, he's building them right now?
No, they're done. They're, the homes, they're occupied and everything. So he, he's up against his limit that he has to start doing infrastructure improvements. That first one is the well, the replacement well that's gotta go in. Um, then after the twentieth, he would be able to do number four up to twenty under the current public works agreement. Then there's major infrastructure that would go along at the pump station, the ground storage tank, uh, the softening system laws to go in. Because we need that capacity in order to, to manage Kennedyville.
So the engineering on this was gonna take up to three months or four months?
Evaluation study.
Evaluation study, which was nineteen thousand dollars.
Right.
And I was talking to the builder, and they were saying how they wanted to have some houses on the market in the spring, just to see where they stand, and, you know, they wanna test the market out. And this is not a conversation I've had with them yet or anything, but, um, the builder said that, who, who was speaking for the developers, who says he has permission to do that, um, actually mentioned he, they may be interested in paying part of this nineteen thousand, I believe. Don't quote me on that, but I think they may. But, in order to move this project forward, is there any way we could, um, allow a couple houses to be built now until this study is done? Or is there any kinda way we could be creative with the contract to allow them to start one or two spec houses with that? I mean, will our system handle that until the, um, um, McCrone study is finished?
Yeah, I think the key is, if, again, talking about the number of homes, realizing that we've already got that first phase is already on our system, and all these improvements were associated with the whole development. So we're already kinda pushing the limit on it. But, the, the goal here would be to look at, if we're gonna open up that public works agreement, again, to look at it, to have a plan in our mind, what we need to get out of it to get this finished, um, you know, and those improvements.
There's any wiggle room to let two houses get started?
Yeah.
To finalize this?
That could be part of a discussion, yeah.
About a different set of owners than originally went bankrupt.
Yeah.
Well, you know, they finished the first part, never paid for anything, and now the second guy's, you know, he's, you're gonna put up four hundred, eight hundred thousand, and just to start doing the next phase, I mean, that's a lot on him, but if they perhaps could get a couple spectrums up and see what sells or what they.
Yeah, I think, I think that was the idea when they negotiated the agreement to let those other four, you know, three homes go in, to be able to do that, and the result we got was we didn't get anything from it. So we got stopped, they stopped at that point where they had to do investment.
Built the three homes?
Yeah.
Was that the original or the second?
That's the second one. They renegotiated. He could build three homes, and, and he agreed that to get that fourth building permit, that he would.
So we've already given them a couple houses?
Yes, yeah.
I don't understand why he's not doing his well. Is he in trouble?
The question would be, I mean, one question, I guess what, what Bob is trying to ask, or at least I think he is, will the system that's in place, can we squeeze another house or two out of it?
I, I think you could, yes, um.
What they're trying to say is could, could the system that's in place squeeze another house or two? So that they can have something to try to sell this spring, and while this study's going on, and I don't, I mean, let's say we found out that, that, you know, it's too costly, and they would, would be stuck with those two extra houses and help the system in place handle it.
Yeah, I believe it would, yeah, uh, because you're not, it's not a big impact on it. My, my recommendation is that we, what I don't wanna see happen is another two go in, and then I can't do it, and then we, you know, it's slowly eating away at us to do it.
Now, I consider these houses between two hundred, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and I consider this more of a workforce housing, and, you know, I really think we need workforce housing in this county. If there's anything we can do to help get the ball rolling, you know, without sticking our neck out there.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the things with, um, we talked about in terms of trying to help with the housing market is to look at the county as a whole in terms of, uh, whether there's a, uh, program that might put in that waives some of the allocation fee, reduced allocation fees to target development in certain areas that may be prime for housing interest, to bring in developers to maybe do that. But what you wanna try to do is be consistent and fair countywide, uh, in order to do that for those opportunities. As, yeah, we wanna be careful not to just target certain developers and, and open a door box, yes, so.
Whatever we do for one, we gotta feel like we can do for anybody, and that same, I, I mean, I, we don't, we don't wanna get, we don't wanna look as though we're doing something special for any one developer over the others.
Yeah, that's why I'd love to see a, a good, consistent policy that we've got as part of our economic development plan that we wanted to help put together, so.
If, if this system, I mean, you know, you know enough about what's going on up there to, if you think that it's, the system is able to handle one or two more homes, I'd be willing to stretch it a couple more homes, and, and if they could pony up half of the cost of this survey or this study, uh, we'll see where that takes us.
Okay.
And, and I would highly recommend that that be an amended public works agreement, so this, this isn't just a verbal, but it needs to be incorporated into the official documents.
Have to talk to Tom about how to, how to word this. Um, we talked about maybe what other areas in the county, um, this would pertain to, and like, it would pertain to Wharton, if we did workforce housing in Wharton. But I think all the upgrades to all the water and septic and milling, and Wharton rather, has already been done.
Then, uh, to hook up to that system, you pay allocation fees.
We would pay allocation fees. But I think the allocation fees in Kennedyville have already been waived for all the time thing.
It's a public works agreement that takes that into account. So you pay certain costs, but you don't pay other costs.
But I'd still like to work out this, this deal, so like Ronnie's helping me out with here. If possible.
I agree with getting the ball rolling, but I still don't understand why he's not doing his well, that he's supposed to do.
I, I can't answer on his, yeah.
We've already been burnt once here. Agreeable? We've been burnt once. Now, we made an agreement.
We were burned by the first developer?
Well, I know, but burnt once, you don't get burned a second time. If he would be, I mean, this is my opinion, if he'd be willing to put up a bond or something that says, if we let him build two more houses, money there for this well, if a third developer comes in.
At least in the amount of the allocation fees, whatever they would be or something.
Yeah, something to, I, I, if he has money to build these two more houses, then why doesn't he have money for the well?
Yeah.
Should've had that in the three houses he built.
But we don't know what the.
That's what we assumed when we agreed to all this.
Know what the price of the well is, 'cause we'd have to wait three more months for the prices.
Well, he can certainly come up with the price of that well, or somewhere close.
It's quoted, everything's quoted through McCrone.
Well, there was the, the whole price. Uh, I'd have to look back for that, 'cause where that was, I can, let's see.
I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned over this. McCrone did this before. Really, shouldn't he be just going back and updating prices? For nineteen thousand dollars?
That's what the nineteen thousand dollars is, is to go back. Well, it's more than updating prices, because technology has changed. They would have to look at the whole design.
You know, for example, you're, when you're sizing the water system, you make an assumption how many gallons per day, per equivalent dwelling, and it may be. We may look at that area in terms of the type of housing, and it may be that you don't, you know, you don't have four people living in a house anymore. Three, or, or just historical, we're not using that much. Or we may have done, in all this time, we may have done some repairs to these plants that, uh, we don't have to maybe make, uh.
I was saying, bringing up about maybe if we could squeeze two more. There was, there was an estimate done in the beginning.
Correct.
How many homes, um, how big a well it had to be to handle so many home, and obviously, that, that's, if you're saying there's room for a couple more houses there, then it was a little bit underestimated. So we can, we can squeeze a couple houses in here and not affect the, the system that's in place, while we work out the details and out what they gotta do to move, second, but I agree wholeheartedly with Tom. I do too with doing a bond or something.
My concern is that we build a couple more houses, and you're back, well, you know, I need two more houses, and then all of a sudden, well, you know what? I don't have any money, and guess who has to pay for this well? King County taxpayers.
We are in a position where we have to.
Right, where we have to have it because the houses there aren't. That's why I would, I, I think he should put up a bond or something to, if, if the estimate before was two hundred thousand, then, I don't know what, I don't know how bonds work, or what it costs them, or anything else, but that's just my opinion. Letters of credit or something, so that, I mean, we got money, he surrendered a letter of credit before, so we got money that time, which saved us some.
I wouldn't, I, and I wouldn't have even suggested a couple additional homes if, if I didn't think the existing system that's in, already in place could handle them. If we were getting ready to perhaps to put out any money to allow that to work, I'd be against it.
I, I understand, yeah.
The system that's already in place can handle a couple. I'd be willing to stretch it for that. No, no more.
And exchange, well, in exchange for that would be whether you're charging the allocation, two allocation fees, you could do that, or whether you talk about whether it's half the. You could do that, or whether you talk about whether it's half the price of the study. Those are the, I guess where we get into the negotiations. He may decide he doesn't want it, he doesn't have the money to do that.
Assuming that when we said the fourth building permit, that we were looking at that, that's what we can handle. After that point, we need to, we need to have a, I mean, why wouldn't it six? Why wouldn't it seven?
It, I don't think it was that right down to that finite thing. I mean, the whole idea was that right now we're on, in theory, borrowed time. Because we've got twenty-five homes already built in the system. For example, the, the sewage pump station. That's mentioned that would have to be upgraded, pretty much services Kennedyville needs to be up, you know, fixed, replaced. Yeah, so.
I, I mean, I'm all for building more houses, but I don't think, I, I just have this fear that all of a sudden, everybody in King County will be paying for it.
Is there any way we could?
You know, I, I don't wanna see that happening.
Is there any way we could structure an agreement that we could vote on in two weeks? About maybe allowing two spec houses to be built while we're waiting for McCrone or something and maybe build into it the.
Or ask him if he'd be willing to put up a bond or letter of credit.
Pay allocation fees.
Pay allocation fees or maybe put up the bond.
Oh, sure.
Ask the developer.
Should pay the allocation fees.
Yeah, the one thing to be, just so we're clear, the public works agreement, I think it was mentioned, is with the owner of the property, not the home builder. So any agreement we would have to have would be with the, the property owner, okay?
Owner of.
The development, who they bought it, so.
The developer and the builder are due their.
No, they're different. Different people.
And I would recommend that the developer, and he may have an idea. I mean, how about you ask him what he, what he's proposing? And then we can go from there.
I, I don't mind that. I just don't wanna see everything held up when they, when it'd be best for them to get their houses on the market, just to see if we could creatively do something. And I don't mind the bond and I don't want the county to get stalked, but.
Yeah, I, I don't like seeing it held up either, but at the same time, I don't want to see.
Well, unless we add to the infrastructure that's there now, we're not gonna get burnt anymore. I mean, the houses might not get built, but the county's not gonna be out anything. Cause we don't, we're not adding anything. We're not having to spend any money to allow these two additional houses to be.
Not for the two, I mean, but in, in the big picture of the thing, the improvements.
That infrastructure.
Right.
Costs us to have two, cause it could absorb two more, but beyond that, it can't absorb, right?
Right.
I understand what you're saying, but I, I think we've, he agreed to this.
Yeah, it's a signed agreement.
But it's, I don't understand what the problem is, except we don't have any money. Banks that loan money.
Well, what we can do is approach the landowner and see if he's willing to enter into some agreement, um, and bring that back to you and for consideration.
That's just my feeling.
No, I, I understand what you're saying. All right, well then we'll, we'll contact, we will be in contact with the landowner and have some, in a couple of weeks hopefully, that, they or may not work. But we'll at least be able to give them the opportunity to see if they'll agree to it or not. That way they're not held up for three more months.
I mean, I think there's two issues here. One's that the developer in a sense and the builder, I mean, the builder doesn't make any money unless he's building. And, and he's being put off by the developer in a sense, cause the developer's not doing what he said he was gonna do. So maybe the builder needs to go to the developer and say, look, you need to do your part, cause this is costing me money.
Right, but the developer can't do anything until after the McCrone study's done in ninety days, ninety, two hundred and twenty days.
Well, he could've honored the original agreement, but.
Right.
He don't wanna put out that much money.
Right.
He'll put up a letter of credit then. Full steam ahead. Let's put this month.
Well, then we don't need a motion. We just, we'll just.
This was, this is, right. Discussion item that, uh, you feedback from you.
Discuss that with him.
We'll follow up with the developer and see what their interest is on it. Report back.
Hard to lose people up here.
All right. It's all business. All right, uh, the next item I have on the agenda is the Public Safety Feasibility Study Award Recommendation. FY nineteen, the Department of Public Works was tasked with, uh, tending a feasibility study for looking at the public safety. Of facility that we have, which of course, as you know, is the detention center, nine-one-one and the sheriff's office. In developing the scope of work for that, we quickly recognize that we're dealing with a very unique, uh, type of, uh, architecture that's involved with this. Because of all the different codes, standards, regulations associated with detention centers, nine-one-one centers, uh, and, and the sheriff's office. That have evolved in the thirty, like thirty-four years, or thirty-five years since that facility was built. Um, so what we did and came to the commissioners and asked that we do a request for qualifications. And part of that process was to go out, identify architects that have specialties in this type of architecture and feasibility studies. And have them respond to qualifications. Then a committee would use a ranking system to identify, uh, the top three firms that have that type of expertise. And then go through an interview process. One of the advantages of the interview process was the opportunity to learn from these different firms. How they've done these approaches and the processes they used on, uh, to demonstrate their expertise and their ability to deliver to other clients. It was very helpful for us, uh, to go through that process. As a result of the interview process, uh, the three firms that we had, there was unanimous a recommendation from the committee members. Which is the, uh, all the four department heads, Jim and Herb, I guess they're all here still. They didn't leave me. Um, Sheriff and Wayne, um, uh, were on the selection committee to review not only the, the original eight submissions, but selection of this architect. So one of the prime considerations that we want to bring up to this for selecting the Crabtree-Rorbach and Associates. Was that they brought up something that we hadn't really considered. Uh, they would be structuring the feasibility study. To fit into a part one submission to the State Department of Budget and Management. So they're dovetailing two different processes that normally originally we were looking at a feasibility study. The next step would be this part one submission, which is submitted to obtain fifty percent funding for construction improvements with the detention center. Um, by combining those two, we compress that time schedule and we economize by, uh, not taking, have this study and then bringing it out to now make it a part one. Um, the other things that were detailed in my memo to you, that this scope of work includes, which is a little more broader than what we originally had thought. Was looking at needs assessment, uh, they're looking at staffing analyses, they're looking at operational assessments. Cost analyses for obviously debt service, project cost, operating budget. So they're looking at not only what it will cost from a project to build whatever gets recommended, but they're looking at the operating costs. They're looking at potential funding sources, um, they're looking at staffing requirements. So it's the kind of whole ball of wax that we really look at a project over its life cycle. So we went back to our Crabtree and asked them for a proposal. The, uh, original budget that was approved in FY nineteen was thirty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And an additional thirty-seven, five hundred to be funded in FY twenty, uh, which of course hasn't been, uh, nailed down yet. Uh, what I suspect the reasoning behind that was that the feasibility study would reach over both fiscal years. So half of it would be funded in the one year and into the next. With this study, in doing the feasibility study, well, the total, and we back up the total of the study that was bud, would be budgeted with seventy-five thousand dollars. Crabtree is proposing to do the feasibility study and part one submission, uh, at, within FY nineteen. So that it can get to the Department of, uh, Management to review an application for fifty percent funding. And get that in place so that by FY twenty-one, a legislative item can be submitted for the funding for the detention center. So they're fitting it into a legislative cycle that we're ready to ask for that. So what we asked them to do was provide a proposal for the feasibility study and part one submission. And then the part two funding, which would occur, uh, which is the follow-up information in FY twenty, FY twenty, next budget cycle. So the total fee for the feasibility study and part one submission is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four fifty-six. So because we only have thirty-seven thousand in FY nineteen now, we would need to, uh, do, use contingency funds in the amount of ninety thousand, forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. In order to begin this study. Crabtree has indicated they're ready to do this study now. Um, and be able to come to completion of this, uh, by the end of June. So we will know where we stand with this project. Couple of things they've mentioned in terms of, uh, I know with the tour, with the new commissioners, there was some, when we took the tours through the detention center. They brought up a lot of different aspects that, uh, are unique in their experience in doing it. One of those that was discussed a little bit is possibly being able to share. Types of facilities between the sheriff's office, nine-one-one and the detention center. That could be part of the detention center project, i.e. with fifty percent funding. And still serve purposes for the sheriff's office and nine-one-one center, depending on, for example, um, there's central booking. Is something that, uh, the sheriff, uh, has projected. But in order to proceed, we're going to need to have some additional funding to be able to do that. But in doing that, we're gonna be able to accomplish a lot more in a shorter period of time. And get you the information you need to make an informed decision on where to go with these, uh, three facilities that make up the complex out there.
Ron, you weren't there was when we took the tour. But what the sheriff recommended was that we, um. Correct me if I'm wrong. We, we built a twenty-two hundred square foot building, put nine-one-one on the second floor, the sheriff's on the first floor. And built it right on the same property as the detention center, so that we don't have to move any of the stuff on the tower and whatnot. As opposed to moving them somewhere else in the community, where it would be a lot, much larger move. And we've. And that was part of what we talked about and what he, what the, um, request is for an architect is.
And one of the big thing.
I don't know, I can't, I.
He said, yeah.
For the first floor. Oh, twenty-two thousand?
I don't remember. I don't remember a figure being said. Your office was only gonna be so big.
Uh, but one of the biggest issues that, that we've talked about ever since I've been around here is that, uh, especially with the nine-one-one center. We've got millions of dollars worth of equipment down in the basement with sewer lines running right over top of it in the ceiling. Which, uh, could easily, and it's, we've all had our fingers crossed for a lot of years that it didn't happen. That, uh, if you ever had a break in the line and ruined all that equipment, we'd all be, feel pretty foolish for not getting it out of there sooner. So it's a lot of money for the study, but the way it's been explained, it seems like there's a. Benefit to moving forward with it. We all know the issues there. They didn't just get that way.
I don't know if you have any other questions for the other guys?